Recording in progress.
Some committee assignments. I happen to know that Councilor Wasp has some things he wants to report, so let's start on that end.
Great. All right. I've got a lot of things on my list. I want to start with the land trust we had recently, and I didn't take down, but I know we had a very nice meeting who had Elizabeth, who will be introduced tonight, and Claire Nasser, who is running, is now in charge of the land trust. We had a meeting with BLM, State Parks, Trinidad Rancheria, Trinidad Museum, I believe that's it. We discussed things like trail, came up important, but I think the consensus was that we wanted to work together to try to improve things in the community. So it was a very nice thing. I think we're moving in a good direction. We hopefully have good news. We have a, we have trails, a committee meeting scheduled for February 20th, yes. But that's the same time that the Rancheria is having their meeting that kind of interfered with ours. We tried for the 27th, but that looks like it's not going to work. So we may be moving it all the way to April 16th. We're trying to get some of these trails issues done, so we can maybe get some things done this summer. State Park Work Day, the State Park is trying to upgrade the park, State Park next to, that's adjacent to the city, to the north, and they've been excited about improving them. The State Park Work Day was going to be organized by Carla Vogel, who's, who's new to the park system, and it's got a lot of energy. It looks like we're going to do some nice things. And so we're going to have a work day, invite everybody who wanted to come out and work that day. They'll have tools and everything. The problem is, there's also going to be a lot of rain. And it looks like it's going to be back at 195% in a good way. I just want to want you to know, if you were thinking about that, keep an eye out, because if you're thinking about coming and helping us, keep an eye out, because we may be postponing it until March, March 2nd. But right now, we still, we're keeping it open, and we'll get the word up, at least by Friday, if we're going to have that happen. But it should be nice. In the future, please, if you see that, come out, help us out, and we'll be trying to get rid of cleanup trails and just improve the park. So we want to see that look nice. One other thing is, went to the HDOG, I thought it might be interesting, how much money was spent. They looked back at the year. They put $10.5 million for jurisdictions generally for road improvement, and including, that includes every city in the county. So those projects will be, you'll be seeing projects being done in Trinidad to some of our roads. Another $10.6 million for these big projects they're taking on. You'll see a lot of changes in highway, especially between Eureka and Arcata. That's that whole, that whole area will be changed soon. It's on track to get done very fast. And then they have $3.5 million in new grants, like the microtransit McKinneyville, multimodal neighborhoods and safe streets and roads throughout the county. Lots of things are being improved. If you're interested, go to the HDOG website. You can find out all kinds of information. So anyway, that's everything.
Thank you, Councilor Breckenridge.
Nothing to report.
Okay. I just have a quick one. Water Advisory Committee is scheduled for March 5th at 5:00 PM. And also wanted to mention that Congressman Hupman toured St. Drive on January 24th, and there's an article on the, on the website and also the Mad River Union talking about that. And I know that Supervisor McDrone is looking for some funding to at least start the engineering phase of improving St. Drive. So that was, you know, that was an interesting visit. No commitments, but, but I think there was definitely a recognition that work needs to be done. And then we'll pass to Steve.
Nothing to report from Humboldt Transit Authority or Redwood Region Economic Department.
All right. Thank you.
And nothing to report.
All right. Thanks, everyone. With that, I guess we'll move on into the, well, let me pause, I guess. Are there any public comments regarding the committee report ads or any questions? All right. Seeing none, then I would like to move on to the tonight's staff reports. I'll turn it over to Eli, our City Manager.
We have Josh McCall, who is Lieutenant with the Sheriff's Office on the Zoom call. So I'll turn it over to him, so he could present regarding what.
Thank you, Eli. Good evening. So I don't have the typical stats that I report on, well, at least part of those, the Greater Trinidad area stats, which obviously includes stuff outside the city but itself, but obviously that has kind of a correlation that wasn't updated in time for me today. That being said, I do have the Trinidad specific stat to calls for service that were all contained within the city limits in Trinidad proper. For January, we had a total of 42 calls for service. Twelve of those were transfers to other agencies, so things like fire and medical, which so obviously puts this down to around 30 calls for the month that were handled in some way, shape, or form by the Sheriff's Office. So not, not bad, I guess, one, one a day or so on average. I wish the rest of our areas could be like that as well. In that, we had three investigations, three neighbor problems, three just general patrols for Trinidad area that were not related to a call for service, a couple of 911 hangups and general disturbances, and then a couple of traffic stops, and then one each of just kind of a lot of random stuff, stuff like alarm calls, pedestrian stops, suspicious persons, suspicious vehicles. And as far as those one each calls for the month, the things that actually had a, I guess, direct criminal criminality to them, there was a trespassing and a vandalism call and a fraud call. But the rest of those one each calls don't appear to be anything that had any actual, you know, confirmed criminal nexus to them. So that's pretty much what I have for the, the month of January.
Thank you, Lieutenant McCall. Really appreciate it.
Yeah.
And did you get any further update regarding the dog issue that we were discussing? I know you had sent me an email.
Yeah, nothing beyond from the, the email that I, that I sent you back in reply to that, the, the follow-up incident related to the, what sounded like the same dog from the previous incident occurred in the city of Eureka. So that was being handled and investigated by the, you know, Eureka City appropriate, you know, officials or agency. But our animal control did have contact with them, obviously due to the, the previous incident, which, you know, appears to be with the same animal or animals and owner. So there is some follow-up on our end as well, just related to the potential violations that are occurring from stuff that did or didn't happen after the initial incident. But the second incident itself, from a, yeah, I hear a few, a couple of weeks ago, was, was within the city of Eureka and has been handled by their agencies.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Other questions, Councilor Breckenridge? All right. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Public has, that's the public, maybe. Oh, are there any public questions on Lieutenant McCall's report?
Oh, this is Ted Pries.
Yes, Ted.
Hi, guys. I'd like to ask Josh if there is any ongoing investigation to try to chase down Mark Brodel, who owns this dog, who's apparently in the wind somewhere, responsible for a second attack, and is obviously a public nuisance and/or danger. What is the Sheriff's Department doing about that, aside from leaving it to Eureka's Police Department?
My, my understanding from the kind of brief update I got from our animal control was that, that he was, it sounds like cited for, this would basically be, my understanding of it is, as far as, you know, during from, probably as a result of the last incident, obviously certain things were put in place as far as requirements when it comes to reporting things, such as if the animals are moved or, or other things that go on with that. And it sounds like that probably didn't happen as, as was supposed to. So I know there was, it sounds like some citation or citations issued in regards to that. And again, as far as the other incident, again, with it occurring in Eureka, that's their, you know, their investigation. I don't know what the status of that is with them. And I do know that our animal control, though, has been working with them to try and, and I think determine where the animal or animals may be, as it sounds like they are, well, it sounds to me like from the last info I got is that they are, you know, being withheld. So, but that is ongoing, something that they're, you know, collaborating with and I think trying to work together to, to sort out.
What, what do you mean the animals are being withheld? Nobody knows where they are or he, she is. Claudia is the dog. Mark Brodel is the guy. He works in Fortuna, and apparently he's in the wind. And he's been that way since March 15th last year, when he attacked me, my wife, and my dog in Trinidad.
I mean, as far as it sounds to me like the, the animals are being like withheld, or is, obviously they haven't been turned over or told where the animal is at. My understanding, unless I had a misunderstanding from them, was that he has been contacted, but I don't know. I'm, I have not received an update myself recently on where that is after the email that I provided with to, to Eli after I'd initially gone on that, as the animal control stuff typically doesn't go through me. So if there had been some recent change in the last couple of days, I may not have been notified of that. But that was my, that was the most recent information that I had on that.
Well, I appreciate it, Josh. And I mean, I don't mean to come down on you, but the Sheriff's Department has fallen down on this particular case and perhaps, perhaps others. We don't know what, what has happened with this dog with other communities and other humans or animals who might have been attacked by Claudia between last March and now. And we're just lucky that the attacks have been both on two relatively large humans. Otherwise, it could have been much, much worse. And so I would like to, as, as the previous victim and representing my dog and my wife as the previous victims, we'd like to know if the Sheriff's Department is, is going after this guy, and if there are citations are going to be possible or, or upcoming. He's in the wind. Apparently, he's couch surfing. He works for an accounting agency in Fortuna. It should not be impossible to find him.
No, I agree. And again, that's what I'm saying. My understanding is he has been located and cited. That's why I was saying citation or citations were issued to him is my understanding of the, the last update I have. It sounds to me, though, like from, again, the last, that last update is that was unknown where the dog is at, and that is something that they are working on. Again, I'm sure in coordination too with the city of Eureka, given the fact that the dog has a history of trying to, you know, hold him accountable for that and, and force that hand to figure out where this, this animal is at, so they can go forward from there. But it sounds like, again, there may have been changes since then, but it sounds like from the, what was presented to me is that he's probably uncooperative with that, and so it'll be going the route of, you know, what needs to happen through court to try and, and address that.
Understood. Uncooperative is, I think, a very kind way of putting it. My understanding from Maya and, and Pablo, who are the victims of this latest attack, is that they haven't heard anything from anybody about, about this guy. And so it would be great to know that, that he's been arrested, incarcerated, something hung up by his thumbs, and the dog, unfortunately, needs to be put down. The dog was judged to be vicious in a court hearing a year ago, well, last March. And, and it's just dangerous to have that thing running around out there.
Yeah.
And I think, I think tonight, we're also going to talk about the ordinance, Ted, from the city of Trinidad. But, but the big issue here is connecting the dots between the dog that did the attack here and in Eureka. And so I think we can offer, even though this latest occurrence was in Eureka, I think that we can offer, you know, to connect with Sheriff Consul's office and see if we can get a status on it. I'm happy to send the email, or Eli and I can, and copy Lieutenant McCall, and see if we can get the, a little bit more detail on what citations were issued and kind of what the current status is. And we can, we can let the public know, and that I, we probably won't reach out to Pablo directly, because that would be the, the Sheriff's Office that would do that. But we can let you know, Ted.
That would be good. And, and, you know, Josh, I don't, I don't mean to be coming down on you, but it's, it's, you know, this, I think this has gotten out of control, particularly with this particular guy. So anyway.
I think, yeah, I think we're all in, in agreement, and heads are nodding in the room. So I think we're, we're all, we're all in support of getting this resolved. And we appreciate Lieutenant McCall's help with that.
No, and I appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. And, and we'll continue to, you know, try to assist in any way we can.
And just as an update, my finger is still a half an inch shorter than it used to be. So.
Jesus. Dad, so sorry. Sorry that happened. Okay. Well, well, we're going to keep working on it, and we'll talk some more about that as well later in the, in the meeting. So thank you for bringing that question to the forefront, because I was curious about that as well. All right, Heather.
Thank you, Lieutenant McCall.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to your staff reports, anyway.
Sure. So the city offices will be closed on Monday for President's Day. And as far as the water plant, because of the heavy rains, we had turbidity issues, so it needed frequent backwashing, but is under control right now. And I also reported that the Mercer Fraser Company, who was the low bidder for the water tank and pipeline project, we had our first meeting last Wednesday. We're going to be meeting weekly on Wednesdays as the project, as the project progresses. Probably will be completed towards the end of summer, only the, the timeline allows them to continue into the fall. And Trinidad Coastal Resilience Plan will be having a public meeting here in the Town Hall on March 7th from 6:00 PM till 8:00 PM. And the TOT Transients Occupancy Tax, with the increase in the occupancy tax, the income for the past quarter, October through December of 2020, was $38,000 compared to a year ago, which was $28,000. And as reported in here, 28 out of the 29 short-term rentals have been inspected and licenses issued. Subsequently, we found out that the 29th SCR has chosen not to function as an SCR. So in the meantime, what we will need to do is at the next council meeting, we will do the lottery, because we want to keep this progress going. And then we can consider if there's any changes in the process in the future by the planning commission. But Jennifer, who oversees the SCR program, is contacting the people who are in the process, so that they could go in there. Those that are prepared will be next council meeting. The Greater Trinidad Chamber of Commerce is going to have, they're calling it a leap year mixer. So it's going to happen on the 29th, which will be Thursday. And the location is at the Moonstone Beach House. So from 5:00 PM until 7:00 PM tonight. And also, we've been notified, we had recently one filming that happened in the Trinidad area, although they didn't, they did some filming in Trinidad, but not as much as we had anticipated. But there's another film which is, is going to be taking place. It doesn't have any large, you know, famous actors in it that we're aware of. But it will be talking about or addressing Hunter Lewis, who was floating, he was, I guess, paddling out to sea on flat iron rock and got lost at sea. And, and this happened a couple of years ago.
In Akaya.
In Akaya, yes. So, so, so this will be, the film will be dealing with that as a documentary. And May 18th, several people in the community, Greater Trinidad, they're outside the city limits, are planning a Celtic fair to take place here at the hall. So that would be 18th, which is set. And then as far as the water plant, we did have some questions that were brought forward by a concerned homeowner asking some questions. We've directed that those questions, most of them, will be addressed at the upcoming Water Advisory Committee meeting, which will happen on March 5th. However, I do have some information that, as to what was asked. One thing was, what was the last month's total paid to Coleman Engineering, who's providing the chief plant operator service for the water plant? The amount for last month, January, was $7,632. And then another question had arisen internally. We were talking about the contracted services that appear for December, and it's in the agenda packet. And under the contracted services, it identifies $31,638. So I was able to identify that $9,728 went to Coleman Engineering, and then the remainder went to Pacific Watershed Associates. Pacific Watershed Associates does work for the city, but through their billing, it just appears that they bill us once a year. So that's why the remainder of that was in December for Pacific Watershed Associates.
Excuse me, Eli.
Yes.
The current total amount paid to Coleman?
$7,632.
Since 2021? No.
No, no, no. This is just for last month. At the Water Advisory Committee meeting, we'll give the totals. There's only so much time that we could devote to that, because there's other urgent matters we're working on. So I had notified Anita that a number of those things would be addressed at the Water Advisory Committee. So, yeah, the totals since 2021 will be brought forward. And let's see. Oh, as far as the water plant, we have, one of our individuals will be taking his T3 exam this coming weekend. Another individual will be taking a T2 exam beginning of March. And another one of our employees just passed the T2 class through Cal State Sacramento, and then we'll be arranging to take the D2 exam. So that's the current.
Like it's progress?
Yes.
Any questions for, other questions or comments for Eli from the council regarding the staff report?
Right.
And how about from the public, any questions regarding the staff report comments?
Excuse me.
Yeah.
But I have a council. Eli, when you, at the Water Committee meeting, can those figures be brought back to the council, so that next one can hear those?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
As the person who happens to chair the Water Advisory Committee, I will just say that that was one of the reasons that we want to kind of go deep at the Water Advisory Committee. We don't have enough time sometimes. We were just reporting out for a staff report for people to ask questions and go back and forth. And so we're going to do a pretty deep analysis, and then we'll bring it back to the council.
And, and one additional thing is dealing with the Axalinda Memorial Trail, that Anita had asked regarding that. had asked regarding that. Uh, it's been going through the Planning Commission and, uh, we are in the process of arranging a meeting with the HRI management team. Once we have that meeting complete, we'll have a better idea as to when the, uh, trail will be reopening. We're planning a short-term, um, opening this year, ideally, uh, by the end of May. And then we'll be working on a longer-term, uh, project, uh, for portion of the trail. As of today. Like I said, the, uh, Planning Commission has been addressing that also.
All right. Since we added a couple of other items, I'll go ahead and ask for any public comments again on the staff report. If there's anything, since we added a few things. Right. I don't see any hands raised. Um, the staff can kick me on us on that. Uh, so the next up is items from the floor. So that, at this time, members of the public may comment on things that are not on tonight's agenda. Um, try to stay within the three minutes if you can, and the council as a whole will not respond in depth. And please.
Diane Stotz, Trinidad. So council members and community, we heard Ted tonight beg for help. And the email isn't going to cut it. So I want to get my, get permission from Eli and you to start a petition in Gabe and Anton's office. And I would like people to sign it so that we can take it to the sheriff. I'll take it to Eureka Police Department. I've got a lot of guts. And we will talk to them about this dog. The dog does not need to be alive anymore. And this person that has now done it again to that poor lady that had to be thrown out of Humboldt. We need to stand up as a community because we had a horrible thing happen. And Ted and Brenda and their little dog still aren't okay. They don't feel okay. And this incident really upset them and upset a lot of us. And thank goodness, we had a front page story in the Times Standard. So I would like to know if I could just get some signatures and I'll write a little paragraph, you know, saying we want support. We want something done with this person, with the dog. He needs to be tracked.
But I think that's, you know, you don't need our permission to do that.
Okay. But I just wanted to do, because we're a good, a good.
Can we put it in the town hall or, you know?
Yeah. And it'll take a couple of days because tomorrow we have our big fundraiser and Valentine party. Okay. Thank you. And then the other thing is the ambassadors. Are we, are we getting anywhere? Steve?
We actually have a meeting, uh, coming up next week to revisit that. So.
Okay. Good. And I'm going to talk to Steve Madron in the meantime about this petition and see if he can help me and all that. And then I want you to do whatever you can with the dog ordinance later on. Thank you.
Sometimes if you want to do them online, the petitionschange.org is, a lot of people use that. So, you know, then people don't have to come in physically signed, but it's, it's up to you, Diane.
Okay. I'll talk to Gabe and Anton. Yep, they're my highlights.
Hello, it's Janine Volkmar. I live at three ninety-three Northwest Haven Drive. And I wanted to, I'm a member of the Civic Club. And I wanted to invite every single person here to come to our wonderful event tomorrow night. Starts at six o'clock. We'll have lots of good food. You do not have to be a couple to come. It's for anyone who is in love with love. And we have band members sitting right here and over there. We're going to have an awesome band, the Typhoon High Divers. We're going to have food and all the Civic Club friends and members have been working really, really hard. It starts at six o'clock and we hope you'll be here. The other thing I wanted to say was the front page story first broke in the Mad River Union. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Other, uh, public comments or announcements? Hey, seeing none, I will bring this back to the council for the consent agenda. So any questions or comments, anything you want to pull on consent agenda? All right. Any public comments or questions about the consent agenda? Yes, Ms. Provost, please.
Thank you. Good evening. Um, I'm unfamiliar with the second or third readings of ordinances. Is there another reading for the ordinance for the Title Seventeen Code?
Where we're at with that, she's asking how many.
Yeah. Uh, Trevor is on the Zoom, so I'll have her answer.
Uh, I believe just two readings are required. So this would be the final approval.
A concern about one element, and I, I just was starting to read it tonight. Um, and it's on page sixty-two of the document. Um.
Thank you. So Ms. Provost, I'm going to, I pause for just a second.
Okay.
Former Mayor Gladwin rightfully suggested that I, uh, first ask if any of the council members would like to pull that item for discussion. And so I will, I will offer to pull that. And, and do I need a, I don't need a second to try for that?
Oh, second.
Okay, thank you. Just in case. So Steve has seconded and then all those in favor? All right. So the, um, motion is to pull that item from the consent agenda. So I believe that then the protocol is that that's our first item that we discuss. So.
Could we, could we move it to the third, or not move it to the third item? These two they were.
That's a great idea. Yeah.
We got a lot of people.
Okay. Does everyone agree to that then? Okay. And Ms. Provost, if that's okay, we would like to do those first two items. We have a booth here. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad, uh, you know, we'll be able to discuss a little bit more. All right. So with that, I think we are, uh, ready to move on to, um, one of the highlights of the evening. No, not yet.
We need the.
Oh, thank you. We're so excited to present this award.
Public comment already done. So I'll move that we accept, uh, again, then again, with before the third spot on the discussion.
All right.
I'll second that.
We have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for keeping me on, uh, on the straight and narrow here, you guys. I appreciate it. Okay. All right. So on to our first discussion item, which is, um, the discussion decision regarding a resolution honoring volunteer fire chief Tom Marquette for thirty years of service and introducing at the same time the new, uh, Trinidad Fire Department Chief, Sean Worth. So, um, I wanted to start, I guess, by reading the resolution for Mr. Marquette. And so this is, uh, Resolution, uh, number twenty-eight, twenty-four, zero, one. This is a resolution of the City Council honoring Trinidad Volunteer Fire Chief Tom Marquette for over thirty years of service. Um, so that's amazing. Whereas California Government Code requires incorporated cities to provide police and fire services that are critical for protecting the health and safety of a community and essential for maintaining reasonable property and fire insurance costs. Whereas the Trinidad Volunteer Fire Department has been established since the city was incorporated in eighteen seventy, and since that time, many volunteers have come and gone. Whereas volunteer positions are filled by specialized individuals that recognize their leadership skills, training, and desire to put their community first in times of need. Whereas town resident Tom Marquette chose to live, work, raise a family, and retire here in Trinidad, and for the last thirty years dedicated countless hours to the Trinidad Volunteer Fire Department. Whereas Chief Tom Marquette led the department for over twenty-five of those thirty years, and during that time recruited, trained, mentored dozens of volunteers that have since moved on to professional firefighting or emergency medical careers. And whereas Chief Marquette used his resourcefulness to obtain new vehicles, pumper, safety gear, and life-saving equipment at low or no cost to enrich the overall safety of town residents and personnel alike. And whereas Chief Marquette led dozens of parades, participated in community events, posted countless number of schoolchildren at the Fire Department, showing genuine love and pride for the role he played in the community. Whereas Marquette answered the call whether it was two AM or two PM, false alarms or structure fires, medical alerts, or standby agency support. He did it with leadership, confidence, and a sense of humor that can calm the most serious of situations. His presence compassing and his spirit will carry the next chapter of the Trinidad Volunteer Fire Department into the future. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Trinidad, recognizes Chief Tom Marquette for thirty years of public safety and dedication to the well-being of Trinidad. This will be passed, adopted, and approved by the City Council of the City of Trinidad at a regular meeting thereof on February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four with the following vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations. And I, uh, wanted, uh, Eli to share something else. Yeah, Tom, if you want to work your way up here.
Okay. So, uh,
Yes.
Present that, Tom.
And then say there, Tom. So we also have a nice plaque for you. Trinidad Fire Twenty Twenty Four Recognition of Service presented to volunteer chief Tom Marquette in appreciation of nearly thirty years of public safety, service, and dedication to the well-being of Trinidad.
You're, you're welcome to say a few words. You don't have to. We won't put you on the spot, babe. You're welcome to.
Say that every thirty years. So a little over thirty years, but, and Bob Gabers was chief when I started, everything I know. Bryce taught me some things. Yeah, it's been, my wife was up for those nighttime calls. I figured over twelve hundred calls, so a lot was at night and she had to wake up and watch it come home and go back to sleep. Anyway, thanks, everybody. Your support, supporting the Fire Department. Guys, you get interviews, Sean.
Right, yeah. Yeah, yeah, it's actually where, Sean, where are you at? Okay. Yeah, come on up. Oh, okay.
Hi, I'm Jenny. And I was lucky enough to serve about twenty-three years on the Fire Department, about twenty-one or twenty-two with Tom or under Tom. Can't remember exactly. But we had some pretty wild. We went to big fires, little fires, births, deaths, shark attacks, man over the cliff, dog over the cliff, prisoner rock on fire, and a horse stuck down inside a well, just to name a few. And he was a great firefighter and a great chief. One of a kind. Really lucky that Wes Haven stepping up to help us out and Sean taking over. So I have on that one.
Thank you, Bryce. For community comments?
My name is Yekesel Horse. I'm the Assistant Fire Chief in Trinidad. And for the last thirteen years, I have served with Tom. And I want you to know that it's a whole new commitment. Doesn't go far enough to what this man has done for the community. So I just wanted to know that you don't know what it's like to haul a four-hundred-pound man out of a second-story building with Pomeranians by hand at your ears. It gives a whole new me to volunteering. I just wanted to say it's been an absolute pleasure to serve with Tom for the last thirteen years. Looking forward to Sean coming on. And my favorite story about Tom is when the phone rings, then the chief answers, and there's a lady that says, "My cat's up in the tree. Can you come and get him out?" And Tom says, "How much does he weigh?" And she says, "What does that have to do with it?" And Tom says, "It depends on what size hoes I'm going to play." It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Tom. And from my son Greg, he thanks you and Dick and, uh, the Fire Department. My son was a volunteer fireman when he was in high school. And we lived three houses away from Tom and Sue. So it was pretty easy for Gregory to get going and help, um, the Fire Department. He's not here now. He lives in Chico. But I get to watch Tom. I've gotten to watch Tom over the years walk over here to the Fire Department and ride a slow bike for many, many years. And he would come over every day or every other day and check in with the city hall. And then he got one of those fast bikes, the electric bikes. And so I, I have the window that, where I can see quite a bit on East Street. It would just go. But anyway, thank you from the Starfleet family, Tom and Sue, your support.
Jan West, representing the Trinidad Civic Club. Tom, you have been wonderful for our community. And to consider the fact that it's been thirty years is almost unheard of for volunteers so dedicated and loyal. And we just want to extend our sincere thanks for all you've done for our community. Sounds like from Dick and Bryce's stories that we don't know the half of what you've been through, but we do appreciate it. And the Fire Department does have, um, a close place in the hearts of, uh, the Trinidad Civic Club because we were some of the instigators, not me personally, but the women back in nineteen forty-eight, who insisted that the city needed community fire protection. You know what? The town burned down part of it several times already. So thanks to them getting, uh, a meeting organized with a commitment that there would be a plan for community fire protections and the Fire Department was formed. So, um, that makes it special to us, the Fire Department, and especially Tom for all his service. Thank you.
Any other comments or recognition? All right, great. So I'm going to, uh, move on then to Sean, to introduce Sean. Eli, did you want to do that?
Yeah, yeah, sure. Uh, so Sean's coming up. So Sean Worth is the fire chief with the West Haven Volunteer Fire Department and has agreed to be also a fire chief, volunteer chief for our city as well. He's got, uh, some charges that he needs to fill after Tom, but, uh, we're looking forward to Sean and then continuing. Yeah. So if you want to say a few words?
Yeah. So, uh, my name's Sean. I've been with West Haven for years. And I've met many, many times, too. Long season, long with you. I was always glad to see you in there. And, uh, just happy to see the entire one, two. Personally, the reason is one day I hope to retire. I probably got a little more time to go. So thank you, Tom. Thank you guys for having me.
Welcome. Welcome.
Yeah, so we have some refreshments here. So I guess what, like five minutes?
Yes, let's do that.
So feel free to help yourself and chat for a little bit, then we'll continue the meeting.
Yeah, we'll give you a break and you give folks a chance to congratulate Tom.
You can go from either side. From either side, you'll get the same effect.
Okay.
We're going to call her Liz. And Liz Henohosa is, has recently started working at the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust. And she is a graduate of Cal Poly, humble. Bachelor of Science in Forestry, Natural Resource Conservation Program. She has served as a Spanish-speaking guide for underserved Latin families, Latina families. And she likes to inspire children's interest in science through nature excursion. And as a teacher, I think that's great. She is, she joined the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust as a coastal stewardship coordinator in the fall of 2023. And we really think that's going to give, and she's going to join the Trail Committee. She's decided to come on as to represent the land trust in our trails committee. And I like the idea of her a new perspective that we'll have to look at trails and since the land trust has so many trails of interest. So I want to thank you and welcome you to our city government. So I want to thank you and welcome you to our city government. And would you like to say anything?
Thank you for letting me be a part of this and I'm just loving working for the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust. And I work for Claire Nacer, who's a wonderful and talented executive director. And we're, we have some great things in the works. And we're trying to fulfill our mission statement, which is to provide public access to the boats. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, we need to take a quick vote to, yes, okay. So does some, let me actually, let me go to public comment. So any comments about this appointment of Elizabeth Henohosa? To the Trinidad Trails Committee. Alright. I don't see any. So with that, I'll bring it back to the council.
Well, I'll make sure that we get Elizabeth to our first meeting.
Alright, a nice second pass. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed. Welcome. Thank you.
And one more thing. Elizabeth, I know you love these meetings, but you do not have to say it for the rest of your life.
Alright, so our next agenda item, then we're going to go back to the consent agenda because as you recall, we pulled the zoning ordinance. And so let me, maybe I can go to Ms. Povol. If you can tell us the section that you wanted to kind of address. And then I think Trevor's still on and we'll, we'll try to get that accomplished.
Thank you so much again. I, I haven't had the opportunity to, to review this document thoroughly, but I did catch something that I thought should be brought to your attention, maybe some modification. It's on page 62 and it's section 17.16.080 Cultural Resources. I'm not sure if it's 62 on your page, but it's 62 on my Zoom page. But it's.
I searched online on cultural resources that will come up.
I have under, I have page 18, 84, I think that's where she, 17.
That's the zoning ordinance. Yes, exactly. You're right. Yeah, that's it. Page 18 of 84 of the zoning ordinance in the packet. I think, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Back to page 62 if you're just looking at the video.
Great, thank you. So go ahead, Ms. Povol. Would you?
Yes, thank you. So when reading, when reading this, says within the portion of the Shirai study area, zoned open space for any soil disturbance, removal of vegetation, placement of temporary or permanent structure, or establishment of a use identified in, and I'm not sure what TMC means.
Alright, so it's referring back to 1716.020.
Okay. The part that I wanted to draw attention to is that last sentence where it says, except for a fence to protect burial grounds, no soil disturbance, removal of vegetation, structural improvements or use shall be permitted unless it is approved by the city council, the state historic preservation officer, the Trinidad rancheria, and the lineal descendants of Shirai, which I think needs to go back to the Trinidad management plan, which might have to include those bodies, which one of them is the Yurok tribe. And I'm not sure if the coastal conservancy has to be in there. So I was thinking that this section might have to relate back to the Trinidad management plan.
Thank you. Trevor, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say that nothing substantive is being changed. That's the existing language as certified in 1980 and it's based on policy 69 in the Landes Plan. So all, the only changes here in red, TMC is section is Trinidad Municipal Code. So all it's doing is updating the code section is all, is the only change being proposed.
Okay, well, I would like to request and have the city planning committee consider adding the Yurok tribe to this. This is Yurok Aboriginal Territory and I think that that should be added. Thank you.
And, and I think, I think, you know, with policy 69 as well, I think the city, we do plan on looking at that language and, and adding that language at some point in the future. The intent of this though is just updating like code sections and capitalizations and corrections. So the intent is nothing substantive with this amendment at this time.
I miss about you.
I appreciate that, but for the record, I do like to have that noted that I think we need to add the Yurok tribe in that section. I do see some, besides just code changes, I do see some other language changes throughout the document. So that's just as a Yurok tribal member and and as a Yurok council member, I just want to remind the city the importance of working with the Yurok tribe and developing plans, et cetera. So thank you for letting me have that comment time.
Thank you. And actually, I guess Trevor, I have a quick question for you then. If, if we made that substantive or relatively, you know, kind of small, small substantive change, but a really important one, is it, what would be the ramifications? Would we be sending it back to the planning commission for consideration? Is there a deadline we're trying to meet? What's? I guess I'm just trying to figure out the pros and cons of making that change now.
Yeah. I'm not sure it necessarily has to go back to the planning commission. I think that I would recommend not passing it tonight. We don't necessarily have a deadline, except that we're just trying to get this cleaned up. Just as a reminder, the, what was originally adopted in the zoning ordinance in 1980 was codified in, in 1990 and, and the two don't quite match. And so, and, and then there were also some amendments over the years that haven't been certified by the coastal commission. So the intent of this is just to make what is codified in the city's code consistent with what's certified by the coastal commission and so that we don't have to use a dual numbering system and things like that. And we passed a couple of ordinances, the, the reasonable accommodation and, and the housing updates last year. And we need this in order to submit those to the coastal commission. There's not, there's not a deadline. We're not working under a grant. It, it might open up some other issues, you know, like consistency with the land use plan since this language is based on existing policy 69 in the land use plan. And I, I think we do recognize that that needs to be updated on a number of levels. You know, I don't know if adding that here would raise additional issues or not. So I would say if you want to do that to hold off on approving the second reading and, and we can look into the implications of that.
So I guess, I guess it sounds like the decision is move forward with the understanding that we're going to modify the language when we actually do the substantive changes or pause now. So I'm going to turn over the councillors now for questions and comments.
I have one. She explained that she found this in this spot. It might be an idea that we look through, through more of these, more of this area in terms of where the, what the sort of are, to see if this is, this is, maybe that that might be something to take some time to do some of our other ordinances and policies and find out if we're consistent throughout.
Okay, thank you. I think, yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. And it sounds like the planning commission is going through and kind of scrubbing and it's going to clean up the language and potentially policy 69 as well. Other comments or questions on this?
I just agree with Jack that, that I think it's, it is definitely worth noting in this, but I think it really points to a larger issue. And so I would rather not do this one at a time, instead look for a way to, to look at all of our policies consistency. So I support that.
Okay. Alright, any other thoughts?
I will point out one thing. I think. with the reference to section seventeen sixteen oh two oh A, the A should not be there. It should be all the uses listed in section seventeen sixteen oh two oh. So I would suggest correcting that tonight if you're going to approve the second reading.
Okay. All right. Um, I do want to go back to, uh, any other public comments. Um, Ms. Povol has provided hers, but are there other comments as well? Questions? Okay, then I will bring it back to the council. And, um, is there a motion on this?
Like a motion that we accept the, with, with a change that still not, maybe not quite sure exactly what the change was that you recommend.
Seventeen sixteen oh two oh has A, B, C, D, and it's referring just to A, but it needs to be all of them.
Okay, then I would, I will, uh, let's do it with, uh, A through whatever, I don't know how many letters.
It's A through E.
A through E, um, as the only change at this time.
Is there?
I will second that.
Okay, and all those?
All right.
All right, thank you. Thanks for the discussion. And it sounds like we have some work to do there. So we'll, we'll be watching that as we go forward. Okay. All right, let's see. Our next step then is our decision, uh, discussion regarding the letter of support for the Trinidad Rancheria Raze Grant for the one-on-one Trinidad area access improvement project. I'm going to turn it over to Eli, to staff to kind of cover this and then we'll go from there.
Okay. And we also have our city engineer Steve here. Uh, and he works for GHD and GHD, we've had Josh Wolf, uh, represent the city uh, access improvement project. So we got this request from the Rancheria, uh, in order for the city to support the Rancheria being granted this Raze grant. And so the request is to have a letter sent, uh, from the city, uh, signed by the mayor, uh, supporting the Rancheria receiving the Raze grant, which will be applied to the, um, Trinidad area access improvement project for highway one-on-one. And we received several letters of, uh, comments, um, specifically indicating that neither of the two options has been chosen yet. There's still an alternative three D and an alternative five C. One of them will entail, uh, making improvements to the current exit in Trinidad, creating a roundabout and making improvements along scenic drive towards the Rancheria. Then the other alternative would be alternative three D, which would create a new exit, uh, that would be south of our exit, approximately one and a half miles. And that, uh, exit will, uh, serve, uh, the Rancheria. They do have a scoping meeting coming up next Tuesday, a week from today, uh, at the Rancheria at five-thirty, from five-thirty to seven-thirty. And at that point, they'll discuss those two alternatives again. So I would suggest that, uh, we do a letter of support, but focus strictly on the Raze grant. I think we support the Rancheria receiving the grant in order to be applied to this project. Uh, indicating which project maybe we might even want to say that at this point, there's still two alternatives being considered. So, so that's the suggestion.
All right. Are there questions for, um? Eli on this topic. Just chat. I, the only thing I wanted to say was it's clear that the support is for the Raze grant. Um, for those who might oppose the hotel, this Raze grant is for the highway interchange. So this is specifically just for traffic and, and improvements to scenic drive. Is that right? So it's the interchange, either the interchange would be, um, uh, a change to the, to the, you know, the, maybe a traffic circle or whatever at the freeway off-ramp, or it's a completely separate, uh, off-ramp to the casino and hotel. Correct?
That's correct. Yes. I just wanted to clarify that.
Uh, will we at some point have discussion over which of these plans the council wants to support? Not tonight, I understand, but at some point.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Uh, well, we, I think it's even been suggested that, uh, that a presentation can be made to the council, uh, by the group, uh, that's working on this. So, uh, so yeah, we can make that request at next week's meeting so that it could be and then the council could weigh which option.
Although I guess they're doing the community outreach at the February twentieth, so they.
Right.
Repeat that.
Yeah.
All right. Um, so no questions from the council, any questions from the public regarding the Raze grant, uh, support letter? Bryce, oh, I'm sorry. Please.
Hi, uh, I'm Elaine Weinreth. I'm a co-chair of Friends of West Haven and we've been following this, uh, uh, this project very closely because it did have the potential of gravely impacting our community. And we've been in, uh, in close touch with the Rancheria, made our concerns very well stated. I am not entirely, uh, convinced, looking at the latest document, looking at the, uh, the illustration on the latest documents, that it is not going to impact our community. They, they have told us that it wouldn't, but I, I'm not convinced from looking at this, uh, this diagram that they're showing, uh, that it would not. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I noticed in the document, in the, uh, agenda package that there was a plea to, uh, send an email with the mayor's signature on it, uh, to whoever it is that's doing the Raze, uh, thing. I was wondering whether that was indeed sent in that fashion. Because if it was, it was a major boo-boo and I think you guys know why. I don't think I have to explain the bound act to any of you guys. Um, that, that was my first comment. My, I'm also, I also think that it's pretty mature to be asking to give money for something that you, as a council, don't know what. Some of the plans on this could affect the city fairly drastically. And here you would be basically giving money with one hand and then, you know, two or three years down the line, you might be frantically trying to, you know, to scramble back, to, to get them to, to back off of things. And I would suggest that you wait on making a decision on supporting this grant until after this public presentation has been made on February twentieth. It's not that far away so that you at least know what it is that you are trying to support. Instead of just randomly giving money away and hoping for the best, that, that doesn't seem very prudent.
Carolyn, thank you for your comments. Um, is there a timeline they're looking for on this? I'm just curious.
They actually sent this to us and indicated that, uh, they would like us to send it as soon as possible because the grant is being considered.
We, we don't know the deadline for the grant submission though, I, I would assume.
Let's see, it doesn't say anything in any.
Yeah, it doesn't say it in the packet. Okay. The deadline is February twentieth. The deadline is February twentieth. Okay. But a member of the public is. Helping us out here. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and continue with public comments on Bryce. If you want to come to the podium, please.
Thank you. I'd like to more or less echo what you've said and make a few additional points. Um, no back project forward. If you look carefully at some of the materials that describe the, the project, the purpose and need statements, um, which is the justification for the project, the basic justification, says that scenic drive between the town and the Rancheria is unsafe. That is just not true. Um, it's just as safe as just about any other two-lane road around here. Caltrans continues to confuse the south part of scenic drive with the north part. The south part is definitely has some serious safety issues. It's actually closed now. But that's a whole different situation than the north side part. So they shouldn't be able to kind of just use some sleight of hand there and, um, you know, use that justification for this tremendous expenditure of public funds for this project. The other thing that's questionable is the claim that the Rancheria lands need to be reconnected. The point is, the fact is, they were never disconnected in the first place. The lands that are now part of the, uh, housing on the east side of the freeway were acquired long after the freeway came in in nineteen sixty-two. In nineteen sixty-two, the Rancheria only lost a small triangle piece of land, about one acre, that nobody was using wood use or anything. It's very misleading. It's, it's borders on dishonest to say that these lands need to be reconnected. But that's another aspect of this that's disturbing. You should, you know, think carefully about whether you want to, um, condone that kind of, you know, whatever you want to call it. The, the bottom line is that all these changes are designed to, um, increase the patronage of the casino. That's like the golden ring that everybody wants now, uh, this tremendous competition between Blue Lake, Bear River and Trinidad Rancheria. We're all being dragged into the middle of it. Uh, with I don't think a big casino that Trinidad should not be known for a big casino. This is a place that should be known for its natural splendor and, uh, that type of thing. So I think you should, um, hold off on any kind of endorsement of a or engine projects, certainly until you know which option you're supporting. Because one of them that's still on the table is the no project alternative. That might be the one you decide is most appropriate. So.
Thank you, Bryce. Appreciate it. And yes, Ms. Povol, you'd like to speak?
Uh, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm speaking as a Trinidad West Haven resident for my comment right now. So thank you. Um, I concur with the other two, uh, folks who spoke. I think it's way too early for the city to make a decision around this. You should actually have them come and do a presentation, um, to see what the plans are, which will substantially change the, um, how we come into Trinidad and how we leave Trinidad, if they're doing roundabouts. Um, one of the things that I've always heard from this council and always heard from the Trinidad residents is keeping it a small-town feel. And the changes that they are making, I don't think represent what you're trying to create for the city of Trinidad. I think you really need to examine the plans that they are, uh, submitting. You need to know what the costs are that will be associated with the city of Trinidad because it's within the city of Trinidad limits. And, um, I think it's too early to make a decision regarding that. What benefit does it have for the city of Trinidad? I've asked for studies, traffic studies. Have there been accidents? Have there been, uh, uh, traffic control situations? And I know it gets really busy in the summertime. So does this help during the summertime, um, vacationing that happens? I, I'm not sure if there's been more accidents or why they're having a roundabout. What are the changes and why, what's the purpose? Have there been too many accidents? What's the data to support the changes that are going to affect the city of Trinidad? Let alone the residents of West Haven, where it will affect landowners, traffic noise, et cetera. Uh, the other thing I would suggest to the city is you need to do a public app, public outreach to the city of Trinidad residents. I don't know if that's happened. Have you inquired from your residents there? You represent the city residents. Have you asked them? Have you did a survey? Have you had them do a public hearing about that? So that you can vote based on what your city residents, your, um, citizens would like you to do so. Uh, those are my comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And we, I believe we have another public comment in the, in the room as well.
Hello, my name is Jeff Proust. I'm a res- a West Haven resident. I shop here and go to restaurants here, but I'm, uh, like the resident of the city. Um, I have done a little research on Raze grants. I don't, I don't know a lot, but I do know that there were Raze grants in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three. Um, so it's not, um, a surprise object that, a financial object that the Rancheria could be going after. I'm not sure how long the window has been open for them to apply, but it's interesting that, um, you are asked now to, to, um, join their endeavor with just two weeks to spare and not enough time for you to have multiple public meetings on it to get input and, and do your own research on what this involves and what you are supporting. Um, I also want to say that I, I, um, have similar feelings with, uh, with Bryce, that our community and our, our world here is a world of, of incredible beauty of nature, small-town vibes. And I do appreciate as the former superintendent of Trinidad School, uh, the financial benefit that the casino has brought to the, the tribal council and, and its people. And I, I, I totally support all the benefits that I've seen from them. But there is a limit. bigger is not better. And I, I think you need to go slow on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
One more. It's Ted and I can't figure out how to wave my hand, but I'll.
All right. Yeah, go ahead, Ted. And then we have a comment in the room as well.
Okay, sorry.
And I, I'm sorry, I didn't, yeah, we didn't see your hand up.
No, I couldn't figure out how to make it work, but, um.
Okay, all right.
I'd have to completely agree with the previous four comments, whatever. There's not been nearly enough public discussion about what any of this will mean to the, uh, greater Trinidad area. Um, the, uh, the interchange, if, if it goes that far, would be an enormous change and an enormous project for, for Trinidad. Um, and I mean, nothing against the Rancheria to try to do what they can do to, for their economic development, but we really haven't had enough talk about this. And I totally agree that this is being rushed through before anybody in town knows what's going on. That's my comment.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you for your patience.
My name is Dick Bruce. I live at seven eighty Underwood Drive in Trinidad. Um, I'm going to echo the same. The main objective of the interchange is obviously to service the casino. Uh, if that interchange happens, uh, it's going to help service their whole example. It's also it's in their map. It's in Mark. There is no economic benefit to the city of Trinidad this interchange. In fact, it's going to be an economic line. An economic line is from tax revenues because the city is going to lose gas at the Rancheria's casino when they start buying sundry. You see, tax revenue for the city. So such as I would like to support Rancheria, I say to the town, this is not going to be a benefit in any way to see the Trinidad. The other thing that you should think about if you approve this letter is Raze grant. I don't think any of you know what a Raze grant is, do you? Does anybody here know what a Raze grant is? Yeah, I didn't know what it was this morning either.
Yeah, I didn't like that.
So I Googled it and I looked it up and I website. This is the definition of a Raze grant. Raze grant, Raze discretionary grants help project sponsors at the state and local level, including municipalities like tribal governments, counties and other. tribal governments, counties, and others complete. And this is the kicker. Critical freight and passenger transportation infrastructure project. Is a critical freight passenger transportation infrastructure project? I don't think so. The eligibility requirements of raise allow project that may be harder to support US Department of Transportation grant program. Your homework. Think about what the economic decline for the city is. Where's the benefit for the city of Trinidad?
Thank you. Sir, please. Other comments from the public on this? All right, then I'm going to bring it back to the council. Other, um, let's have the discussion. What do we think about this right now?
We'll just start. I've heard a few people about this whole idea of what's going on with Rancho Ria. You support the Rancho Ria in the dust, but now I've heard, besides what I heard tonight, a few other people say similar things. So right now I have only heard things saying this is really not a good idea. And it's, it it really sounds like um I'd like to have more information, so I'm, even though I know this grant's going to be, has to be done right away, I'm going to say that I'd like to postpone this for let's say possible. See if we can postpone it. See if we can have someone come. This project is really good. Hopefully we can get a better idea. Totally all right.
Yes, other thoughts? Um, initially, I went to the last meeting, whenever that was. It was a big hoopla. Everybody was very excited and uh angry and uh so I thought it was really interesting, the the ideas. Uh, and the idea of a a roundabout as you come off the freeway seemed good to me initially, but I'm listening to the public comments and I am less convinced than I was. So uh that's good. Uh, so I would like more information. Um, if if they, we'll go to the meeting, what's it, next week and and get some there, but to simply endorse, um, you know, when we don't really know what it is we are endorsing uh seems to me something to pause and get hold of.
Yeah, I would not be ready to endorse this project without more.
All right, and um
Just uh the, I'm looking for what time it is on the twentieth and can at least one counselor make it on the twentieth?
Oh, I am planning to attend.
Okay.
Sure, yeah.
And I'm not saying that this is, you know, this, the timing is such that we won't be coming back as council. Uh, so I know it's somewhere, so what time?
It's a five-thirty, seven-thirty, and twenty.
Where?
At the um Heist Casino Bingo Hall.
Okay. Yeah, I just, again, I think I'm, it's fairly uh consistent across the board. Knowing what we're approving, I understand the all the different inter- intricacies, but I would attend that meeting.
Yeah, I I think that was my first thought as well was, well, gee, it feels a little bit, you know, out of sync. Ideally, we'd be able to go to that meeting. I I do support the Rancho Ria, and I actually think that um because they've been a great partner to the city, and I actually think, I mean, this is a classic example of coming to a meeting and I try to, you know, you like have a position and then, you know, you hear the public comments and you change your mind, and that's what, that's what we're supposed to do. We're supposed to come in with an open mind and and I um, you know, what was going through my mind was, well, we should support them because infrastructure changes, like getting a roundabout. I think a roundabout would be nice. I think there have been, there's been, there've been at least one death and there, I've I've had some near misses many, many times, and I think it would be safer. Um, I also think safety along Seating Drive on this end um could be improved for walkers and bikes, and I don't know that the Rancho Ria is going to do that. Maybe this new process that Supervisor Madron's pointing to, maybe we can do it there with that, you know, if if that goes forward, so. But um I appreciate the public comments, and I think you're right. I think it's, I I feel like I'd like to help, you know, meet their deadline. I'd like to support them, but in this case, I just, I can't see my way to do it right now. So it sounds like the council is unanimous. Um, let's go ahead and um make a motion and a second and vote, though, to put it out on record. So I guess I'll I'll make the motion. I guess, yeah, I'll make the motions as I'm talking. Um, so I will move that we would defer this to um well, if the deadline is February twentieth, then I guess we're we're saying that we're not going to to support this, so. Um, unfortunately, I I I, we will have to move that direction because i- if the deadline is truly February twentieth, so that's the motion.
I sure wish.
So it was kind of meandering.
Yeah, I'm sure I, yeah.
No, 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 no.
Can I take a stab at?
Please.
I would move that the council uh seek more information, such as the meeting on the twentieth, um so that we can make informed decisions in the future and not sign a letter of support tonight.
Okay. Can I, can I ask that the letter in response to the Rancho Ria be very polite in saying, you know, we're we're very interested in your project. We'd like to be aboard, but we need more, something where it doesn't feel like a rejection.
Or we can let the motion stand in the minutes. I mean, yes, we can respond. I'm sure Eli is well versed at that.
That's not part of the motion, right? Might not be, but I'll second that knowledge.
Whatever you say. Yeah.
And add that.
And I think that's appropriate direction the staff adds to the motion that was voted on, so.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much, and thank you for the the public comments on this item. Um, yeah, very helpful, good interaction. Um, next up is our stormwater project recap. So uh Eli, do you want to um?
Hey, you guys heard Steve Fallon.
We're doing a stormwater recap. We're all right. And all that, no, Steve Allen, uh Eli, do you want me to turn to Steve?
Yeah, yeah, so uh yeah, we've completed the stormwater project. Uh, it was a long project, which Becky can attest to, mainly because it started years ago. It it took quite a while to finally have it come to completion. So basically, this would be a recap, and our city engineer, Steve Allen, give you a PowerPoint presentation about how we progressed. Steve.
Thank you, Bryce. Steve Allen, engineer of CHG. So this is a recap. Uh, it's been multiple, multiple years. It's including the things that just finished up construction, so we can go to the next slide. So we'll go over the purposes of what started the project to begin with. It's happened over time. Learned some lessons learned, share uh share some of the project benefits, and believe it or not, even though this project is ending, there are some next steps we want to share, and then also lead time for questions. So the purpose started with a letter from the State Water Resources Control Board, I think it was back in two thousand six, as I recall. Pointing out that Trinidad is one of thirty-four designated areas of special biological significance, or ASBS, along the California coast, and I believe that came out of nineteen seventy-four Ocean Plan, and then seemingly kind of sat on the shelf, so to speak, for a long time. In the early two thousand, they started actually doing a lot of studies and issues up and down. These letters together that they sent to discharges by in the ASBS area. The Trinidad one that included the city of Trinidad at court to Ria. I think it's each one. They basically, what the letter basically said was, it's a special area. They didn't say it's polluted. They just said it's a special area. We want to protect it, and we don't to pollute it, which seems very reasonable. Um, and there's, there was a couple of options. There, there was either waiver option, which means you say, and if we get a waiver because we still need to discharge stormwater because the city's case along with many others, and so that was required a lot of monitoring, a lot of quality. And basically presenting that and getting a a five-year waiver. You still have to do regular monitoring, and at the end of five years, you got to apply for another waiver. Alternative path that the city also chose was to pursue grant funding because the city was saying we would like to fund projects and try to get things cleaned up and get this resolved, which the city did go after, so. Be planning with main project partners and stakeholders. Um, and so the 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 result of that was that there was an action plan, which identified projects within the city, and then there were some outside the city as well. And that also helps basically key up projects for future feature funding. So the overall concept, you know, to use proven technologies, so it's not like we're trying to find some new magical solution. Want to utilize gravity as much as possible, and trying to use electricity and pump and so to maintain minimizing its requirements in general, and then also utilize dispersed infiltration areas. So we're talking infiltration. We don't really want to collect everything, get rid of what, and try to capture the first area so that you're not collecting some. So interestingly, let me show a picture of the ASBS area. So it's, it's hard to see, but you can see kind of a light blue rectangle kind of going around about half of Trinidad head. I'm an engineer. I'm not a file, so I find it's interesting for the area of biological significance of the area would be an actual rectangle. I'll explain that. Uh, but you can see that it really does go around the city of Trinidad, and part of what they say about the ASBS area is not just things that go directly into the ASBS area, but things that go and ever. So obviously, I'd love to currents going north and south at different times of the year. So the planning study started with Mill Creek on the north and then all to Pass Level, as I recall, on the south end, because all those could potentially next slide please. So some of the brief timelines, so the that initial planning uh plan got finished up in two thousand eight and a half. Actually, I'm in construction at phase one, which was out here on Main Street and also on Ocean. Finished in twenty fourteen, so there was a bit of a gap there. Part of that was the city actually applied for, I believe, three grants before we got the first phase funded. And part of that reason was we also included a geophysical investigation, so basically geotechnical investigation, and also wanted to do a groundwater model. And we were, the the city was politely told the first two times that the state isn't trying to fund the groundwater model, but they're trying to fund home lot projects. And we politely were in a unique situation. We're on raised bluffs, towns on septic systems, and we need to be very careful about getting great water. Third one, we actually invited the reviewers from Sacramento to actually come out here and get on the ground and see it, which fortunately they did, and we got that third grant. Because at the time the state was telling us, and it's pretty common in the stormwater world, that infiltration is good. Infiltration is good, just infiltrate water wherever you can, but then obviously, as you all know, it's, you don't really want to do bluffs, and there are certain other areas that might be a problem, and you're wondering how it's going to affect septic systems, so. First phase really took a while to get grant funding and do all that, all that legwork. The phase one B um used to be phase one and phase two, and then through grant funding, things kind of got broke up a little bit more. The phasing's not really important, but that was for the Hector Avenue Rain Garden and also some of the files. And then the final phase, that was really finished last year. Uh, that was Underwood Drive, Edwards, Yumi, Lower Beach Parking Area, and what was the H S U, Polonka Berry Lab, now Cal Poly, of course. So maybe you probably remember some of the geotechnical field activities that we're doing, which finished up in twenty twelve. First, we had to do this before we could actually do the groundwater model, before we could actually design the project, but we put in a lot of monitoring wells, so we really wanted to collect groundwater data and find out what's going on. So some of them were borings, where you just get spot information about the soils. Uh, then we put pretty well to get a network that's monitored. The kind of the peakish lines are transects, so we went through some geophysical transects that you know, picture of what's happening over a water area rather than just the spot, spot data. Interestingly, the one down by where the lighthouse used to be did a boring there and only went down like sixty feet and stopped, whereas everywhere else, they're down like a hundred and forty. Didn't really figure out what was going on, but we did a transect, too. It turns out that there are sea mounts, like kind of like Trinidad head or a lot of the other rocks that are out there. There's a buried sea mount that went right near that location, so it was very valuable. You can have better line geology wise, which really went into the groundwater model and was first more data, but we were happy to get the grant, but got as much data as we could. We also mapped a lot of drainages, bedrock, seep, springs, met with the Turri. Um, obviously, a lot of it down on the south. Um, a lot of water, a lot of issues. The state went through before they sent the letter. They also mapped some of the springs and discharge points. But since we're trying to do some of that, but we're trying to get more detailed efficiency, spent a lot of time to get more information from people and knowledge about that. Next slide please. And all that information led into a groundwater model, so I'm not going to go into the specifics, but it's a very commonly used model, STIRPAC three D groundwater model. Um, so we use all that soil data, surface topography, we have the information about the bedrock, what was going on, so we do physical work that we had done and then built this groundwater model that's very commonly used and data from the monitoring wells, so we could actually calibrate it. And so we ended up with a very good idea about how the current groundwater is working, and then we could basically superimpose our project on it and start showing the changes where we put water. We had questions about putting water to see how that would, how that would, a model will predict it would change. We had the whole model calibrated by a third-party hydrologic, or I'm sorry, hydrologic. And then we also had a third-party geotechnical firm blustability and giving passing specific data to the model, so we could double-check that we weren't putting water. Remember getting the chuckles or a little harassment in a prior council meeting when we showed these before the first project was being done, and perhaps this was an oversimplified rendering? However, I'll say that it's, the point was that a lot of this, you know, stormwater infrastructure is really underground, and so if it works right, and everyone receives it, thinks about it, everything. The reality is, we'll see some construction photos in a minute. I'm sure most of you remember, but we dug up that whole area on the bottom left that's kind of dark, called it to render fresh pavement. Um, so it was a very, very large hole, but by the time you get it all covered up and then paved back over, that it really is about all you see when it's all done and separated.
Would help if you had different cars.
There you go. That would have been a good idea then. So another rendering we had was down on Hector Street at the Rain Garden. I think you'll remember. Um, half parking area, you know, the intersection is not well-defined. I will admit that rendering maybe hasn't quite come to fruition, the the plants there are not quite that vivacious or colorful, but it did give people an idea about what we're trying to change in that thing. So here are some construction photos. This was the first phase. Uh, the one on the upper left is a street right on Ocean. One of the grassy swells that we were doing, so the water board really wanted to use grassy swells to help for pre-treatment stormwater, which is very common that he does in practice. So, but we also had one with parking and then characters that were trying to incorporate bioswells and some corporate parking. Middle picture on the upper side is the Hector Street Rain Garden right up at its plantage. And then on the right is, I think it's on Ocean, I recall, that it's one of the large infiltration chambers, so these are water gets into these, it's stored, and then there's perforated on the bottom, so then they slowly leak out, basically, water slowly gets out from the ground with your tongue. And a picture on the bottom is the one right out front. That we basically had inside of the sidewalk. Had to dig a very deep pit, and the reason for that, again, we're using gravity. We're trying to pull as much water away from the bluff as we could, so it went all the way down to West Street. And we put in drainage inlets and brought that water back towards the Mill Creek Drainage, because from a bedrock perspective, there's kind of a ridge that goes through town, so we were, knew we were farming up a way from the bluff that this water is not going to go towards the bluff, it's going to go towards the driver's person. Be concerned about blustability and try to improve it. Next slide. This is more of our recent project over the last couple of years. So an upper plate is on Underwood, one of the new grassy swell areas that we're getting right near that empty lot that comes off the school ground and it's white of the water that comes off of the school grounds. So this bioswell in that area really captures a lot of that flow and helps infiltrate it. On the upper left is, that is, ended up being the largest infiltration area, which is the lower parking lot. So a good photo of Patrick Solen on our team and the state beach in the background. But these were all the water that we couldn't infiltrate in dispersed areas ended up on the hill, of course. And so fortunately, there was enough room down there, and the city had enough property down That we could infiltrate the river. On the lower left is another part of the drainage network that we're putting in. Drainage inlets and pipes and there's more water going down, so that's going all the way down the hill. And then we're also able to do a couple of improvements on the downstream access. This is one of the manholes, this is just more of a typical kind of junction box, or lack of a better word. Uh, capturing that stormwater safely downhill. And on the bottom right, this is one of the pre-treatment units. So this is a very deep pit, which looks like, these are very large, this is, happens to be the largest one which is down parking lot again. But every infiltration area has a pre-treatment unit. So regardless of whether or not we were able to utilize bioswells, any water that's collected that's going into infiltration. Area has one of these pre-treatment units. So the pre-treatment is referring to water quality, so pulling out solids like garbage. It's also allowing like, um, sediment debris, sand that blows around to settle out before it goes into infiltration areas. It has a chamber that slows down water enough to be an oil water separator. So we're trying to pull out as much pollutants as we can before we put the water in the infiltration system. And for two reasons, one, that water is going to infiltrate groundwater, so you don't want to pull out as many pollutants as you can. Also from a maintenance perspective, if you just let all those pollutants go into the infiltration chambers, eventually they could clog. And that would be a big, you know, maintenance nightmare for the city down the road. So for their longevity, what is much. So yes, lessons learned. Bioswells, the first year were not real popular and the city council heard that. We heard that, so what we did was we changed the design. We were still getting pressure from the state board to try to include bioswells wherever we could. And they were really pushing for a lot of bioswells and then slash, the public wasn't thrilled about it. So when we really got into it and tried to hear what they weren't happy about, it was really that they were. Due on cave, so they're too deep, they held too much water, if they're trying to park or walk through it, they like, felt like they needed, you know, kit boots to get through it. Which was not really the intent. We were honestly, even from the engineering side, not super thrilled with the actual product of the permeable paper that we use. And then we're trying to balance that permeableness with getting a good sturdy parking area and probably compacting it too much at a time. So it didn't work out as planned. Uh, we changed it the second phase when we're doing work, um, on the east street. And then we changed it again slightly on the slightest, so again, the bottom is on Underwood. And this was the latest one, so it's less concrete, different permeable layers, different starched holes. So it's still going to end up being grassy, people can still park on it. It's, but it's going to do a better job of, of capturing the, the rainwater providing some treatment. So that was one of the items of the bioswells, which is probably the biggest item. Another item on top, which I skipped over, but there were some grant elements that were not in. Like we didn't really have any great idea if we could do a rainwater collection and show how that can work. Encourage others to do that in the city. The city would have partnered with others and there's a lot of effort made by everyone to make that happen and it didn't quite work out. So just for future reference, talking with Angela and Becky, it's like, it's, it's challenging to get a grant to do something when. That's a little bit. And then finally, regulatory requirements on the bottom. So we had a letter, they said there's a specific regulatory requirement, we're going to give you funding to help. In the end, we actually removed the outfall on Hunter Beach. So we had all these infiltration areas, we captured stormwater, we got rid of all these places, the last of it down in Little. Literally removed the outfall on the beach, which I think everyone would agree, including the state board, they funded the project, but that's a, that's a plus, right? Maybe the water quality was questionable, even if it wasn't known to be bad, but just not that it right on the beach, not the best idea. So that's all great and this project did that and theoretically mission accomplished. Um, the downside was with regulatory requirements saying they do change in time, of course, this project took over decades. And during the last year of the project, when we. The, the last set of construction bid set go out. State board contacted us and said, are you sure you want to construct that because we might have to have you go. Groundwater rules now. And so basically, it was too late, it didn't matter if we built that last piece or not, we've already built multiple phases of the project. And they did decide after looking at it. And here's that they're now going to start requiring the city to look at the groundwater perspective because we're entering so much water. And under the basin plan, they said that's their, their responsibility to protect. Of course, there's no potable wells, there's no irrigation wells. Because the groundwater essentially goes through soil into the groundwater and then potentially reaches out in the Pacific Ocean, which is what we're trying to protect. So on practical level, being an engineer, I would say that rather than having an ocean outfall that just dumps stormwater on. The beach, the fact that we're collecting it, treating it, pre-treating it, going to infiltration chambers, going through soil and then going through soil again and out to the ocean. Is probably going to have a lot better water quality than what we were doing originally. And they're not saying it's not, they're just saying that they're now going to require the city to. Or, or like the board complains. Happened wasn't our, our first choice. So some of the next steps, which is, these are the next steps. Um, there are several things the city has been doing, which has been great. So working with the water board, the region board, do the MS four permanent labor process. So the ASBS is what triggered MS four, otherwise MS four stormwater rules are really, started these cities over a hundred thousand population. Cities over ten thousand population or in special cases and. Trinidad is special, they had an area of special biological significance, so they also ended up on the MS four permanent labor process. And we're hoping that. The outfall is gone, that, that might be able to go. The city is also continuing to participate in the Trinidad Bay Watershed Council, which they've been doing for years. Um, working not only on the ASBS, the, of the local watersheds. Um, also the city's been a member of the North, the Stormwater Coalition, so that's leveraging cities of, you know, the Rika, Portina, Fortuna. Others in trying to utilize that local knowledge, um, strength in numbers. They're still doing that, which is great, next slide please. There's one last piece of the project and the grant actually inspired during this month. So there's one last piece we're trying to include, which is interpretive sign. This is graphic of the proposed interpretive sign, which would actually go right up here between the city hall and the. Penis works, so the right, right on the edge of sidewalks, if you can walk nearby, could see that. So that's, we're hoping the contractor has that and they're trying to get it made and see if they can get it installed by the end of the month. So it's the last piece of the project and done. But, but then also with the completion of this project. Yeah, we're also working on the coastal watershed management plan through the coastal resilience action plan. So that's what multiple, local partners also to address not stormwater specifically that were dynamic changed and change. Ocean levels and specifically some of the impacts. Likely working on that, which also could have some storm. So please. Becky's going to get up and say a couple of things, but this has been a huge group effort. It's been a lot of staff and people at the city, one, one person, there's a lot of people at the H B. There's been a lot of other partners, there's been a lot of regulators that have helped, funders that have helped over the years. It's been a huge project, you know, a lot of people that have helped.
I don't have a lot to say, but I just wanted to, um, really echo what Steve said about, um, how from the very beginning, it's just been. Um, a very collaborative effort, um, with the Trinidad Rancheria and, um. Toward the end, um, the Yurok tribe and, um, the land trust and, um, many, many groups that, um. Sort of cheered us on or helped in one way or another with, um, with this. And, um, kind of going back to the beginning, um, Chiwi Lin, who is the mayor, um, when. The letter came, I think, um, or right around in there, um, he really, um, was proactive. A- after getting that letter and, um, going out for a planning grant, um, and he, he didn't do it alone, you know, it's, it was a big group effort. But, um, I really appreciated his leadership and he was a scientist and I can't remember what his. I think he was a chemist or biochemist or something. So it wa- it wasn't exactly his field, but he really like took it on and, you know, organized the city to be able to, um, do this. So I just, um, want you guys to appreciate how, you know, like how long this has been going on and, and. Um, there's a lot that the city has learned over these years and there's still, you know, like as Steve said, the story's not over because we now have another permit. Um, to, to address, um, that, uh, I don't know, wasn't. Kind of came up as a surprise, you know, right after we awarded the construction, so. Anyway, I just like, thanks to the G H team at the start, that is Windsor and Kelly, S H N, which was Streamline Planning. And, um, anyway, so. I'm not sure what's, you know, the next part, but this, the coastal resilience planning process should kind of launch us into another series of, um. Ways to, um, address issues.
Coastal, coastal resilience.
Do we have any water data from past times before then current?
Yeah, so, um, the final project report, um, that has, that's a deliverable for the project. We actually compiled, um, well, um, Steve Trump, um, who is our monitoring consultant. Compiled water quality data from twenty twelve, which was the first, um, round of monitoring that supported our, um. Waiver of the prohibition of discharge into the ASBS. So that was the initial water quality data. And then, um, there was a round for the first part of the project that ended in twenty fourteen. And then we did monitoring, um, even though we had no discharge to, um, sample. We sampled the ocean receiving water so that we could sort of see like, did it make a difference? And it's, um, it's a little hard to tell because we're not the only, um, contributor. Um, and, but that's available, there's a sampling report, which is a lot of detail if you're interested. Um, and it's a part of the final project report and the final project report kind of gives a little bit more of an overview of the results. And, um, we'll post that on the city's website or I can send it to you. And Steve, I don't know if you have anything to add to the water quality.
Yeah, just that there's, you know, the original planning grant, we did water quality sampling and maybe not a lot of it. We had a few hits at a few things, but it was kind of sporadic, so maybe some suspended solids, you know, some turbidity. Occasionally get a bit colorful, which could be from dogs, birds, could be, that system could be a lot of things. But we weren't getting a, we never found like a, a huge problem that we're addressing. But there were, there were some kind of typical stormwater scattered water issues. The fact that, you know, whatever got collected in the old system was discharged in a pipe from Hunter Beach. And now that there's no discharge, whatever pollutants loading there was, clearly it's reduced by now. Discharge in the beach.
Were you seeing like oil from the, the roads or cars that were flowing into the water?
We never got a lot of, uh, hydrocarbon or oil hits, um, occasionally some copper.
Yeah, metal copper.
Metal and copper, which could have been from brake shoes or, or other things. Yeah.
I moved here only a little over a year ago and I, you know, knocked out by seeing this because I missed all the big pipe part. It's phenomenal, but I did have a sort of a, a, a surface question, which is, I, I live on the corner of Ocean East. And, uh, right alongside my house, there's about this much mud. And the cars go through it now, there's tracks, I mean, you could, you could break foot in there. Is it? Just par for the course now? It's, it's one of the, it is one of those bioswales, I mean. It's covered in about that much mud.
Is it on the east street side or is it?
The east street side. So that was. Right on the corner of East and Ocean. First, yeah.
We should go.
Yes, please, please do.
But that's not, that's not the intent of the finished project. So maybe, they may be collecting sediment because the grassy swell will let it settle out, but maybe it needs to be.
You know, all of us are afraid to touch it because of the project, so. The other thing, you mentioned that, that some of the swales are a little pot bellied. Um, and that's just, we have to just live with that, it's just learning as you go. Is that correct?
Those are the ones on Ocean Street.
Yes. But they're, they're not going to be corrected, that we're just going to live with it, is that correct?
City decides to do something.
Thank you.
And there's some level of maintenance expected with all this, right? The, the infiltration galleries have maintenance, the swales have maintenance, the aisle for what's that called? The Rain Garden has maintenance, right? So is, are we, that's with public works, right? There was no money in the grant for, for maintenance, but it was, it was built into our public works efforts, I'm assuming.
Correct, so our goal to minimize maintenance is a good goal, but it doesn't mean that there's no maintenance.
But you were saying like the galleries are designed to hold, you know, libido bags and oil and things like that. So that it doesn't get clogged up the system, I'm assuming that we're still on some sort of maintenance.
Correct, and part of that was utilizing some improvements of the monitoring plan and other prior projects. We actually got a back truck for the city, or it's a trailer.
Yeah.
You know, rather than like the contractors have a big truck.
Sure, sure.
But, but we, we knew what the capabilities of the back trailer were, which the city has. And so that's what they use for the like, it's a confined space, you don't want public works going down in those.
No.
So they actually just dropped that down and we removed.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's how, that's how those heat pre-treatment units are cleaned out. The grassy swales generally, I mean, there's on Ocean, there's a lot of cherry trees that just drop a lot of leaves, using the ball. Both the plug up at the inlets, so that has to be cleaned out, they need to be mowed. Just a little bit of maintenance, so. Just the amount of maintenance that's required. We also worked, part of what we did was an operation maintenance, or operation maintenance manual. And then we're also working this war project to get. The inspections and, and reporting more automated using tablets and GIS and different things. To get the process, not just public works, for staff to help comply with those requirements. Trying to minimize it, but not.
And it sounded like just a little public input, if they see something that doesn't look right, that just that. That mud, you know, it could have been, it could have been out of someone's trailer, you know, uh, or whatever. But yeah, someone else could pick it back.
Would, would it be helpful to have like a yearly sweet sweeping, like right before the rainy season? So all that free doesn't go down into your treatment? I know a lot of cities do sweet sweeping, we just don't.
So I guess, um, that could be a benefit if there's a lot of stuff in the street.
Yeah.
Um, but from what I hear from public works and from Steve, who I think every time he comes, he peers in to the, what are called DIs that drop inlets where. You know, that where the water goes off the street into the system, that there's not that much stuff building up. And so it might be that, um, handling it that way by just cleaning out the DIs and the other components. Might be more efficient than street sweeping. Um, but I don't know.
The reason for, but in, in general, it's a good idea, right? If you can get at the source from ever going in the system, you got to clean it out. But for Trinidad, who doesn't have a street sweeper, it would be perhaps onerous, so that's why we can just go down that route. Unfortunately, there hasn't, there's some areas that maybe get a little bit more, like there's going to be a little bit more sand and drainage that's down towards the parking lot. Ocean Street is going to get more. Cherry trees, you know, there's a few isolated areas, but for, for the most part, it's been more of a once or twice a year, of course, individually, to try to deal with maintenance.
Something that the city could like find out how much it costs to have one of the, um, sweep sweepers come one time and just like, what's that cost? And make a decision of, I mean, especially if like, we're going to have to do monitoring down, um. At the bottom, um, by the big, by, at the beach parking lot of the groundwater to, um. Prove to the regional board that it's not, that we're not polluting it by infiltrating her. And so maybe if there is something that they're detecting. Uh, that would be like if it's, I mean, I don't think there's a lot of cigarette butts, but, or, um. Uh, bacteria, you know, maybe it would be worth, um, worthwhile to sweet, street sweep, you know, before the rains. That could be decided based on the water quality data, I guess.
What's the life expectancy of one of these? Swells, does it ever, they ever break down? It's just a point in time that they just, they forget.
They don't really break down, so there's a, a concrete perimeter and there's, you know, ag base and sand and the topsoil. Things that don't really degrade away and then there's the, the pavers on top. So other than some, a little bit of. So other than some, a little bit of subtle bit, they really don't break down.
Kind of a perimeter.
I just want the other, the other aspects, didn't mean to interrupt you. The 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 other aspects, like the infiltration chambers and the pre-treatment units, and they should last for twenty, forty, fifty years. There's, there's nothing, there's no part of the project that we're aware of, like as a short timeframe. Kind of typical structure, twenty plus years.
Well, I came on to council in two thousand twelve, so I've watched this whole thing go on. And it's been really, I think, just been unbelievable. Um unbelievable to watch and have you racing. So I'm really happy that you've been able to do all the work and others in the past scared of you have the audience, but anyway, uh thank you. It's been really a fascinating project. It's pretty exciting. I'm sorry. You know, we'll care about it anymore. So.
We think it's exciting. We really thought the crowd was there for the stormwater.
Over the years, they haven't been, you know. We could put the swales on the agenda and we'd fill the room again. Just saying, I was there for that.
More ten hits at your meeting, just let us know.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, bring it up. Let me see if there are any public comments or questions for the team here. All right, I'm going to bring it back to the council and I guess I would just echo whatever you said. I mean, I've watched this go on for a while too, and it's just really nice to have, you know, be able to kind of mark something done. And, you know, it's been a big success in terms of the completion of the project and all I've worked has gone into it. So yeah, so thank you guys for everything you did and everything.
Yeah.
Good job. Yeah. All right. So our next topic is, uh, we had discussed at the last council meeting, the uh discussion decision regarding the preliminary draft accessory dwelling ordinance. So the A D U ordinance. And so we're going to kind of continue the discussion from last time on that. I'm going to turn it over to Trevor. Eli, Trevor, do you want to kick us off on that? And well, um I'll just draw everybody's attention to, again, to these questions that were on the second page, I believe, sorry, third page, three of five of Trevor's kind of write up. And so I'll probably be coming back to the counselors to kind of get a feel for how you how you would direct the planning mission based on those three questions.
Can we have the three questions back on the screen?
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can pull them up, it's on page three of five. That's a good, good idea.
Page two fifty, you know, if you're looking at.
Yeah, thank you. That would be enough for our discussions. Okay, blow it up. All right. So Trevor, if you want to kind of give us a recap, um hopefully everybody kind of remembers from last time, but um if you can kind of refresh our memory and we'll see if we can make some progress on this.
Yeah, um I don't really have any changes or updates from the last meeting, um but hopefully you've had a little bit more time to digest this. Um this is um an ordinance based on current state A D U laws. Um and I've been working closely with coastal commission staff on drafting the ordinance. Um there's definitely some, you know, the city has limited options in um you know, how how much it can regulate um accessory dwelling units. Um eh but one of the main questions that we have remaining that the planning commission was hoping to get some additional input on is S is the issue of S T Rs in in A D U's. So um there's a couple of different types of A D U's. It's it's a fairly complex ordinance. There's a, there's sort of a a variety of permitting um layers, but most of these are supposed to be approved ministerially, so without a hearing. Um but the the main question I'm looking for from the city council, the planning commission would like input on is is whether S T R should be allowed in any form in either the primary unit or the A D U's. Um the state law limits um the use of A D U's as full-time S T Rs. So that's probably not an option. Um but it doesn't say anything about whether the primary unit can be an S T R. And then there's also we have home share and resident S T Rs that are only allowed, you know, for people who are residents of Trinidad. And so um those potentially could increase affordability for for some families. Um so, you know, the question was, should home share resident S T Rs be allowed um in in A D U's and or the primary unit? Um and with the layers of permitting, would these be allowed ministerially? So, you know, as part of the regular easy permit process, or would it be something that you would only allow with a use permit going through the planning commission? So um and I'm happy to answer any questions that might have come up since since the last meeting.
All right. And I think what we're looking for is, if you want to kind of hear from each of the counselors, their perspective, Trevor, or are we looking to get a consensus from the council for the planning commission? We can, we can try for that as well.
Yeah, you know, I think either way, if there's a consensus, great, um especially, you know, maybe there's a consensus on one or two of the questions. Um and then you know, just getting opinions on on the other questions would would be fine. I think whatever guidance you can provide to the planning commission would be helpful. Um and then, you know, if if you have comments on on the rest of the ordinance, um you know, I'm happy to take them um for for consideration. We haven't had a lot of public input. Um so I think the planning commission is happy to have any input, but but these S T R questions are the primary thing I'm looking for guidance.
Okay, great. I think Council West.
Just trying to figure out one thing, I mean, J A D U's. Are they just, and homes, what what is the difference between? It sounds like they're the same thing.
On the types of S T Rs?
S T R, well, for. First is home share.
Yeah, J A D U's um sounds like they're just kind of the same thing. So how do you separate the?
A A oh, A D U's. Well, so a J A D U, it's really you know, J A D U is more of the structure, I guess, the physical structure. And um it's basically carved out of existing living space and in a residence. And they don't have full kitchens. So um you know, it's if someone wants to you know, maybe take their master bedroom, for example, and create a J A D U, that might be a a scenario that that might come up um that someone could actually live in in that. Um and then the S T R is really the use, whether it's a long term or a short term tenant. Um so the J A D U, you know, you could limit it to just long-term tenants or, you know, allow these home share resident S T Rs. Now in in practice, you know, someone just renting out, you know, a a home share S T R is someone running out a bedroom in their home. But it's not necessarily a separate living space. Often, you know, they provide breakfast. There, you know, it's maybe a shared bathroom. They have to enter through the the main door. So there's a, there's a larger variety of potential home share S T Rs where a J A D U is pretty specific. They have their own exterior entrance. There's a locked. You know, there's, there's a, there's not access between the the house and the J A D U. There's a locked door there. Um they don't have to, but generally they have their own bathroom and some sort of cooking, you know, facility, even though it's not a full kitchen, there would at least be some sort of cooking facility. So.
They're required to have that cooking facility in the in the J A. Is that correct?
Um.
I saw that somewhere. I can't find it.
Yeah, I think, yes, I believe they require, you know, it it could just be, you know, some cabinets and a hot plate. It doesn't have to be anything significant. Um but yes, they're supposed to have some sort of cooking facility so that someone can live independently.
Is is a home share resident um a um part of the S C R?
Yes. So home share and resident S T Rs are both types of licenses that are defined in uh the city's S T R ordinance. Um the a resident S T R is someone who lives in Trinidad most of the year. So they have to have their their primary residence has to be in in Trinidad. Um but if they they can rent their house out as a full S T R for a limited period of time, sixty days is what's in the ordinance. A home share S T R is where the occupant, it doesn't necessarily have to be the owner, but the the resident, the occupant that lives there rents out a room in the home while they're on the premises. Um so that's the difference between those.
It's subject to the but the lottery system. Is that right?
Um, no. So there are, there is a cap on on the number of resident S T Rs in the U R zone. Um there are no caps on them in other zones, and there's no cap on home share S T Rs. So they are not subject to that thirty-two citywide cap. But but we currently don't have any licenses, so it's not a big demand.
I think it'd be helpful to me if we could get kind of go one, two, three. Uh so I could hold it all in mind. It's a lot of
Start with the first question. Yeah, right. So so can I take a stab at something, Trevor, and then you can correct me if I'm wrong? Because one thing that helps me with these kind of things is is under, is thinking through the scenarios. So so should the primary unit be allowed to be a full-time S T R? And so I thought, well, let me think of some scenarios. So I own a residence, I currently live in it, and then I build an A D U. And then I could move into that A D U and rent out the primary residence as an S T R. And so that would be kind of a net zero in terms of adding a month to month. In other words, um we wouldn't add a month to month rental because now I've simply moved myself into the A D U and I'm renting out my house as an S T Rs. So, you know, it's, so that's one scenario. Another is I'm an investor. I have a house uh already on a piece property and I add an A D U and I rent that out month to month. And so that is a net game of, so net gain of one unit, A D U unit as an affordable housing. And then like the third uh scenario I came up with, I own a residence, I build an A D U to rent it out as an S T R. And again, there's no gain in month-to-month income. And in question two, should a full-time S T R be allowed to be an A D U? I I was going through, I mean, basically it's like the state law basically says it cert, at least certain A D U's are not allowed to be S T Rs. Um so so my, so I kind of came, got myself around to number one would be, yes, the primary residence could be used as an S T R. Um because because, you know, you're literally saying the A D U is still going to be used for month to month. And so that fits with the state law. But should a full-time S T R be allowed to be an A D U? Would be no, because that doesn't fit with the state law and what the coastal commission told us that we should, we should do ideally. And then I would say three is also a no, because it aligns with number two in that an A D U should not be an S T R. So so I had yes, no, no, based on those scenarios. And I apologize that that's kind of long-winded, but um but is there anything in kind of those scenarios that I just discussed that I'm like, you know, off base on?
No, not necessarily. Um I think the so what the state law says is that S T Rs that fall under this statewide exemption, which is the S T Rs that we're allowing with a ministerial permit can't be S T Rs. Um but but for example, we also have size limits and height limits and and other types of limits on on that S T R, those S T Rs with ministerial permits. If you want something bigger, you can go to the planning commission and get a use permit. It doesn't fall under those state exemptions. So I believe under the state law, if you went and got a use permit, you could an an A D U could be allowed to be an S T R. Now the ordinance is going to be reviewed by H C D. Um we don't necessarily know all the answers to these questions, even coastal commission staff. So you know, H C D may come back and say something somewhat different. Um but that is my understanding of it currently.
Okay. So and I I would also think that we'd want to think about grandfathering in these two properties that had an investment model where maybe their A D U is an S T R. I I wouldn't really want to uh shift somebody's now.
Yeah. So I I was in a comment regarding what Cheryl was saying. Uh I also was thinking of a yes, no, no. But the way I would phrase it is that the creation of any accessory dwelling unit in the city would be to create more housing. And therefore, if you're just making it an S T R, you're not really creating more housing, residential housing.
Yeah, I think that's the the fundamental point is that it's for affordable housing.
Yeah, either affordable or just housing in general, you know, but somehow it's.
We talked about that last time. I mean, it says in the state law that they're looking for affordable housing, but we all believe that maybe it wouldn't be that affordable. We don't know.
And that that was kind of my idea on the last session, but Steve had mentioned that, you know, our S C R um committee has came up with really good rules that we only have a cap. So if someone built an A D U, it doesn't mean they're going to be a S T R. But the cap is the cap. So it would maybe limit the investment if we put all these limitations on an A D U. Like, if I wanted to build an A D U or my neighbor wanted to go to the, and then they said, well, there, maybe not, because there's no hope for me to ever make that. Um it would maybe limit the amount of reoccupy. And our goal is to add.
You're saying that it's.
Or in state, yeah, yeah, that's the state.
I'm sorry, Jack. You're saying that if uh don't allow A D U's to become S T Rs, even if they win the lottery? That.
No, that was my original thing. I was thinking, no, A D U's, they can't be S T Rs. But if we're not uh if if an A D U uh gets granted in the lottery, it means a primary house in another part of the city got moved over. And now that primary house is open for anyone. So we're not really taking away one house out of the city's pocket.
Yeah, I've I've thought long and hard about that because I thought the caps could be the the control. I think the challenge I have is so in the scenario that you described, that we don't know that the primary residence is going to be rented rented out month to month. It could just be that somebody's living there, you know, owns it. Um but but the other thing is if the thing I struggled with was if a different committee comes in and changes the rules on S C Rs.
Right.
And the city council votes, we no longer, the two things don't, like, I feel like the ordinance, this ordinance seems to stand on its own merit. Um and not rely on a different ordinance to as a control. But I I have answers, I was looking logically, but and I think the spirit of the law for A D U's is that it's for month-to-month, you know, rental. That is the thing. The thing is, I also have in the back of my mind that we're not going to have a lot of A D U's. So it's not a huge problem, I don't think. I mean, do we, did we talk about this last time? Like, what number of possible A D U's we could have? Or I guess J A D U's could be more, but.
The max, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the septic system is is going to limit it. The septic system would limit it uh to a certain degree. But Trevor, when we were talking before, you mentioned that that some uh S T Rs would not be um limited by the cap.
Yeah. So the the cap of thirty-two um o- only applies to full-time S T Rs. And I think the the difference is that the home share and the resident S T Rs have to be operated by residents. So they're providing income to residents of of the city. So, you know, I, there is a possibility that you know, being able to rent out one or the other, as some form of S T R could make, you know, buying a house in Trinidad more affordable for for some families. So I think that was sort of the idea of thinking about the home share and the resident S T Rs differently. Um there is a cap on thirty-six of thirty-six A D U's in the ordinance, um not J A D U's, but A D U's. Um and that's just based on our water um, demand assessment and and assumption of the maximum number, but we really can't know the maximum number of ADUs that can be built in Trinidad, because we don't know the septic capacity of every lot.
Well, that's more than I thought, so.
If JADUs are, I mean, really, I think they're a great deal, but I like sort of create great problems if we don't do but I I agree. When I went to go for one that the the should be long-term and with the housing, but it's long-term housing. And I also thought two and three were the same, that we're not getting rid of. Well, I thought the first one was that, but I do think the ADUs long-term helps help cut that one in the middle, but yeah, but I think JADUs maybe to maybe kick it out, because people believe you're a good long-term.
They they could be just dwellings in the back. You just don't put a full kitchen.
Yeah, and so there's a lot they talked about adding adding on adding on their home. So I think that'd be, I think it's a great place to get lower income. Some lower income, more people be able to because I guess our, I think that was all of that.
So J.
I think they're both in the same talk. I I think they're both the same, you know, they're just just a different style.
That JADUs don't have a cap, does it?
Well, that's why I'd like the ADUs just generally to be long-term rent, or you don't worry about, app not worry about. I think people can just get permitted. I don't know what the permits are going to be like and how that's going to work, but then you get a permit, you can be, have a J, U or ADU, and then that would be a rental income that should be that could happen. I like that. I think it's great way. So forgetting what people are hearing possibly, you think about some, some people have it because they have a lower cost.
Trevor, what would be the difference between building an ADU and a JADU? Uh, except that you can't have a full kitchen, but.
Well, you don't build a JADU. Basically, you carve a JADU out of your existing house.
Would you convert like a garage into a JADU? Is that what you're thinking?
Um, potentially, yes, but for so for the coastal commission, if you're if you're converting non-living space, then it's development and it requires a CDP. So you're you're bumped up into a different um permit category. So, because the state law is a little different from, you know, coastal commission, so but if you're building a JADU that is converting only existing living space, including a bedroom, then the coastal commission doesn't consider that development and you don't need a CDP. You just need a a ministerial ADU license from the city. And then just, it's like a building permit, basically. Um,
It can't be bigger than five hundred, oh, I'm sorry. I was gonna say, it can't be bigger than five hundred square feet at all, right? Is that the limit on it?
That's the limit, yes. But you could potentially create an ADU by carving, you do have to carve at least one bedroom out, but then you could convert a garage as well. And that could be a JADU under the state law, but you'd still need the CDP part. It just changes the permitting a little bit.
Hey, I I have to ask, you know, on this, they may remember.
I don't know.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't remember. I I don't, I don't recall. So we're having a really good discussion. So um, any other you know, thing you want to get on the record just now, otherwise I'll go to public comments and come back. See, okay, I'm going to go to public comments. Any public comments regarding the ADUs? Or questions? All right, great. Then I think I'll bring it back to the council. So what I hear us saying is we have some different perspectives potentially on question one, two, and three. So why don't I do this? Um, I'm, why don't you go through each question? I'll ask for our show hands for yes or no. And and we can kind of try to wrap this up. So the first question will be, should the primary unit be allowed to be a full-time STR? And so uh those of you who believe yes, the full-time unit should be allowed to be a full-time STR, assuming that they win the lottery and licensing for uh, please raise your hand if you agree with yes. Okay? That is four, I think, out of five. And those who think no, the primary should not. Okay? So Mr. Ladwin believes no, that should not. Um, all right. So number two is, should full-time STR be allowed uh in an ADU subject to a use permit? Uh, all those who think yes, raise your hand. All those who think no. Okay, unanimous on no for number two. On number three, all those who think yes, raise your hand.
Could you read?
Yeah, really? I'm sorry. Do you want me to read the question?
I think so.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I thought it was, okay. Should home share or resident STRs be allowed in ADUs and/or the primary unit, and if so, with or without a use permit? Um, so those people uh who think yes, the home share or resident STR should be allowed in an ADU.
It says and/or primary, like I'd say it should be allowed in primary, but not on ADU.
Oh, yeah, okay. That's confusing. Okay, um.
You could have three, yeah.
Let's ask the eight, right?
But I think three A, three B, right?
Yeah.
Well, you've, I think you've actually already answered, because you said yes to one. So that sort of answers that second part of three.
Yeah, right. Okay, so let's just answer, should home share or resident STRs be allowed in ADUs? And then we can add, and then whoever votes yes can talk about the with the use permit. Um, okay, so all those who believe yes. Okay, all those who believe no. Okay, that's unanimous as well. So we won't answer uh with or without a use permit, because we're saying no. Does that help, Trevor? I hope we've at least given you the council's perspective on this. Of course, when we go back to the planning commission, if if they, you know, look at this more deeply and come back with a strong argument, um, you know, we can always change our minds. But we reserve that one.
Yeah, I think that's very helpful, and I think that's probably the most consistent with you know, what what HCD is looking for. So that probably gives us the least hurdles in in getting everything approved. So I think that's fine.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, for
Thank you.
for that thought process.
Great.
Yeah. All right, uh, we have another uh interesting topic coming up. So um, do you guys Yeah, do you guys need a uh short, like three-minute break, or do you want to just plow through and try to get this done?
Let's get done.
Okay, let's move ahead. This is the um consider the update of the city dog ordinance. Eli, do you want to pick us uh off on that?
Yeah. I I had all my sheets for the dog ordinance except the one that I prepared. So thanks to Jack, uh, so I can read this. So basically, what we were saying here is uh Katie had brought this to our attention again, saying, what are we going to do about the dog ordinance? And she had been in touch with Supervisor Madrum. Uh, and he had indicated that uh between him and the sheriff that they have other things that they've been dealing with and haven't been able to get to the county ordinance. We were originally waiting for the county ordinance, so we thought we could be uh, you know, sort of parallel some of what the county ordinance says and then take it from there. So as a result, what we decided was to bring it back to the city uh council and the city in general to consider our existing ordinance and what kind of modifications we would like to see. And and we also have the portion dealing with uh potentially vicious, potentially dangerous and public nuisance dogs that the county has. So we could consider what that, how that's worded. Uh, part of what we need uh would be ideally incorporating some hearing process because our current current ordinance doesn't have a hearing process. And when Ted and his wife and his dog were attacked by the other dog, Claudia, they ended up uh the county animal control utilizing the state's law uh in order to have a hearing process. Uh, so they could have done it through the county, or they could have done it through the state, but they could not have done it through our ordinance. Beyond that, you know, some of the issues that have arisen recently, uh such as Ted was bringing forward that uh you know, some of this is beyond our control, because it is with the the county. We have since um, this was first brought forward, we've added the county animal control officer and the animal control from the county handle it on the city end. So this way they don't have to request uh my permission or Dave's permission, uh, they can just act uh quickly. Uh, because a lot of these things come up quickly, and we don't want to stall the ability respond. So that has changed in paying the county some additional money, not that much, approximately around six thousand some per year. Also, we've subsequently, since the attack with Ted, um, we posted the leash law signs around town. We had ordered fifty of them. Uh, we made them intentionally smaller than other signs, and then we faced them towards pedestrians and not towards street traffic. Because the last thing we wanted to do was to have signage uh about dogs, um, you know, facing uh car traffic and truck traffic, which would possibly get their attention off the road, end up hitting someone because they were trying to read what the signs said. Also, we sent letters to all the ordinances of, to all the residents regarding the proper dog etiquette to use the fact that they should use leashes and they should get a dog license. Uh, we also considered a radio ad campaign to notify visitors of the city leash law in addition to other useful information for visitors, which I still think would be helpful. Uh, because we have notified our three hundred and some residents, but uh, we get so many visitors to the city. Uh, it would be helpful to spread the word a little bit more around, especially to those living in Humble County. They frequent Trinidad more often than visitors outside of the area. And then a seasonal leash lending library set up in front of my office where uh Jacket put, Jacket put with the uh original leash here, which hasn't been returned. Jack would have, maybe, maybe.
Yeah.
Oh, you put
Jack's ideas.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it was, okay. So anyway, the the lending didn't work well, because they haven't returned it. But but I I think they're fairly cheap. We can buy it from you and have some extras here and there. So basically, we want to bring it to the council and the public to revisit our ordinance, uh add some kind of a hearing process, and then consider any other modifications we would like to do in the meantime. Leave it at that.
Uh, I do want to talk about the ordinances, but I want to talk about more than uh the ordinances, because uh, if if this, if people with dogs in the city aren't uh aware and conscientious the ordinances, that that's really the tail end of the process. Um, so what I I would really like to see is a push for awareness uh that the city, uh, you know, town hall is where you come if you have uh an awareness of a dog that's been aggressive. For example, this dog, Wanda, who's been such a a poster child um, was known to the neighbors to be aggressive. She was known to get out of her enclosure. And the people in that, right there at the end of Wagner, told me they wouldn't come out of their houses when she was out. Now, why wasn't that reported? Because, you know, people's awareness of, well, what the goods are going to do or nobody. So that's why I would like to see through the licensing thing, I'd like to see a real drive and on the licensing uh paper, you know, that that people fill out to have some information about aggressive dogs, vicious dogs, and you know, sort of a one, two, and you're out kind of thing. If the dog is reported twice, there's, it goes straight to a hearing, maybe. That's where the ordinances would come in. But I think the ordinances are sort of the tail end of of awareness. Um, now, I don't want to make work for for uh the staff, but but um, I don't know what else to do, except that that if people really know that they it matters and that we're on it and 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 promoting the leash laws, but also if your dog attacks another dog, you know, if if your dog is known to be vicious or any of those things. But there's a a procedure and that it's followed through on. Uh, this, I think Wanda wouldn't, we wouldn't have had the problem we did with Wanda, because she would have been reported. On a personal basis with this dog in the last.
Okay, I thought it was Claudia.
Claudia.
What?
Claudia.
Claudia is the dog.
Oh, Claudia.
Okay.
Sorry, Wanda.
It's such a nice name for such a
Claudia.
lascivious dog.
Uh, and yeah, it, so I I haven't thought it all the way through, but it just seems to me that it it is, like, with the septic suit, that was such a great uh process, because everybody's awareness went up. You know, and um, and so I I think we need something of the same sort.
Very good, yeah, that that sounds good. Um, I know the letter that we had prepared last year actually touched upon some of those things, uh, because we the fact that residents on Wagner but hadn't shared it with them. So we encourage people in the letter to to share it with the city. Uh, so uh, one thing that you did mention is when people renew their dog permits, that we can, you know, have some materials prepared. We can share with them. And I know that uh that you, along with Cheryl and Jennifer, had talked about possibly uh canvassing the uh, the the neighborhood. Uh, so so, uh, so those are several, you know, good ideas.
Yes.
We don't have any way to enforce it here in town. We have no sheriff, you know, you know, we have these nice, pretty signs, and I love the signs. But there's no way to to, so maybe what I would have liked to see on the sign is see a dog off leash, call animal control with the telephone number. And then they're like, oh, my dog's off a leash. I don't want someone to call animal control. I'm on a leash. Instead of a little ordinance that says, hey, I should have done it. Because, yeah, if there was a telephone number, I would have, I I could tell you, yeah, see that throughout my neighborhood on a daily basis. And it would frighten people that wouldn't have their dog on a leash. So I would like to see dog off leash, call animal control immediately, you know, the number.
So, but Jack, you're suggesting that people who see a dog off leash, they should be, I mean, I'm concerned about people just running up and calling on a guy with the dog off leash, just because it's
Well, it's the naughty people that will be like, oh, I should have
You're gonna have to tell them that you're calling about the dog off leash. I think that's concerning a little bit.
A lot of people have to tell, like, I I have people walking down the street all the time that they don't want to
I know, but then calling it, but I guess it's a possible, just seems like I'd like to see something that was more that we could find a little more of the, for one thing, I'm I know a lot of, I would think about some of my games, walking the street, she's, some of the guys I've seen about with dogs off leash are getting a little concerned about, it'll sketchy a lot of times. I don't want her calling in front of me.
Oh, you don't, you could just, but they don't.
They call, I mean, animal control's a long way off, you know, they're coming racing up. I'm not, I'm just not sure how effective that would be. I like I think the idea is good, but I'm not sure.
It's more to frighten the person with the dog off on leash, yeah.
Well, you got to find them. If they have animal control come down here, they're going to take fifteen to twenty minutes to get here, and they're going to have a dog.
Yeah, most, I mean, most, most likely animal control not going to come down, but just to have that fear. The person that's walking down the street and sees, oh, my dog's off a leash and someone's going to call.
If they know, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to because the sign itself doesn't make me fearful of walking my dog off a leash, but if it said if you see a dog off leash, call animal control with a telephone number, that would get me, that would get me kind of fearful and I wouldn't put my dogs.
I I want them to know this, to think, just turn up, I've got to dog off leash, I'm going to call, I'm going to call, listen.
But it's not like you have to do it in front of the person. You could see them walking down the trail and
So, yeah, some people recommend videotaping and sending that to, for example, but yeah, and you know, when, you know, I think you pointed out to me that somebody might see that and be coming aggressive or whatever. And I would probably, you know, I think you pointed out to me that somebody might see that and be coming aggressive or whatever because they don't want to be videotaped, but.
We did have that in town once. They had some problems with dogs there. They start a camera and that started the problem.
Again, I think last time we talked about raising awareness, how do we enforce? And then codification of the ordinances. And so awareness, we've done some things. It sounds like the council would like to see maybe a little bit more in terms of awareness.
Particularly awareness about what do you do if you, if there's an aggressive dog, much less a vicious dog. What, what, there is something you can do and you can stop this from becoming a real problem where somebody gets hurt.
I think that's a good point because I think the awareness part of it is that the personal responsibility. If you are walking and you see a dog off leash, right? So like first, you know, it's avoid this situation if you can, right? Like you shouldn't, if you have a dog especially, but let's say you avoid this situation. I spoke to a dog trainer today and asked her about this. And one of the things she said was, look, if you see, uh, you know, if there's another, if there's a dog coming at me, like I specifically mentioned Claudia. And sure does he want them. Huh? Sure does Wanda. And she, and Wanda and Claudia, you know, all these random dogs. Anyway, um, she said that you could potentially pepper, not pepper spray, but like that pet safe spray. Can, can stop a dog that's just starting to think, you know, that it may want to come after you. But a Claudia type attack, she said a taser. I mean, she said the taser is the way, the way you could literally stop a dog who's going into the red zone. But I will just say that, yeah, I think, you know, so if we could explain to folks in town that like just avoid the situation if you can and call it in, you know. Uh, but if you can't avoid the situation, you know, it's, you know, you have a stick or you have pet safe spray or you have, I mean, God forbid a taser. I would hate for somebody to think they had to do that, but um, but I, yeah, I'm concerned about enforcement. Um, because I feel like our ordinances between the state, county and city are pretty, pretty good. Anyway, so.
I like that. Yes. First of all, when I looked through this, I was trying to find exactly where just even says, you know, we have to have dogs on leash, but I, uh, I think that would be, we've got kind of two issues here. The vicious dog issue and the dog on leash are two kind of different things. And, um, we talked about possibly having, you know, we have a people who could give out warnings or tickets eventually at some point. You know, where when someone's in town, like, uh, that Jean, for instance, if he's around, he could be issuing initially warnings and then tickets if he sees people without dogs. And I think that would be not all the time, but we could have that if we have, uh, an animal control officer. I don't think that would just come to town. That would get a rep just come through, but we could have some people being able to give, give these warnings and tickets out so people see them happening. And I think that, that might help. I think that would be something we could write in and eventually create a, uh, reinforcement, enforcement, actually charging people if they get a second time. So we would have a little bit of, a little bit of ability to actually find these things and get something done. It's not, I know it's not a lot, but it would be something, I think if people saw a few tickets being given out, they'd start thinking maybe we better get our dogs on leash. People need to see it. Combination of saying, you know, protect saying, you know, if you, if you wanted, what you could do is call animal control and let them know, but do you think you could, if it's, if it's bad enough that you're concerned about it, that you can do that. Also, I like this idea of just getting all these different possibilities of things, all of them out there so people can recognize carrying, carrying some kind of item that would, there's some, you would have some here. If they could be carrying around, it's not gonna hurt you. But I think that's the on leash general.
This is Ted. Can I chime in? Um, I want to thank you guys because you've spent an awful lot of time, um, on this question and um, we appreciate it. I, I would like to say that the leash law really had nothing to do with either one of these attacks by Claudia. The, um, the attack on us had to do with negligent human uh, who didn't keep the dog confined correctly. And by the time she attacked us, you know, leashes were not part of this equation. Well, except for the one on Stella, but that didn't help much. The, um, I, I think enforcement is the question and it's as much a problem for the county and the state as it is for Trinidad. How do you do it? I mean, you don't, you don't have dog people running around, you know, citing, uh, uh, dog owners. And that's, um, so that's sort of an unanswerable question. Uh, in the case of our attack, and I'm not sure how common this is gonna be, but, um, the property owner is liable. And if the city wanted to, it could go to the landlord in this case, uh, that was Sam Panici at the end of Wagner and, um, and find him because he's got the liability on his property. Now, it's not his fault that his tenant let his, let the dog out. But, but there's, there's an enforcement mechanism if you wanted to. If you wanted to think about that, it's after the fact, it's too late. Now, the other place where there is, um, a problem, it seems to me in terms of loose dogs and potential danger to the public, um, are on the trails. Because people like to take their, I, I like to let my dog off. Uh, and on the beach, and I like to let my dog off because there's nothing more joyful than a dog on a beach. But if you're worried about public safety, yeah, that's where you might want to think about some enforcement. Um, I heard of, people call me with these things. I, I heard of a couple more attacks down at, um, not attacks, but dog fights and that kind of stuff. Uh, down at State Beach and it scares people off. Those are typically not resident dogs. Those are, those are visitor dogs. Uh, but the only way to, to enforce that is to have an officer down there. And that's, you know, that's what you got to think about, but I, I understand that that's really, that's a huge step for the city to think about that kind of level of, of expense. But fines would be a good idea, um, if we could identify dogs that are and owners, not dogs, but owners of dogs who are incompetent and irresponsible. Um, I think again, you know, this, this just brought it all up again, uh, for me, is that the attack on us was, was horrible. But if it had been Katie and Lucy, if it had been Ed Omburg and Lucy, another Lucy, you know, I mean, it could have been way worse. The attack on Pablo could have been way worse. Pablo is a strong guy and he's a boxer and he was attacked six separate times by this dog. But this is, that's, it's an aberration. I mean, Claudia is an aberration. It should not happen. It's the county's fault for not, um, doing something about it a year ago. Well, March last year. I just, you know, a couple of two cents in there because I do appreciate all your concern. You're spending an awful lot of time and energy on this. Uh, leashes are not gonna would not have changed anything in either one of these attacks. And if people were a little smarter about keeping control of their dogs down on the beach, uh, on the trails, um, that would probably be a really good thing, uh, but enforcement is going to be a really hard thing to accomplish. So that's, I guess that was, that was four cents, not two cents.
Yep, it's Katie. I think, uh, one thing, uh, that really could do is if, if the community is aware that reporting aggressive dogs, I have, that there's a procedure that will be followed up with like, you know, two reports of aggressive behavior and there's a hearing on your dog. That would have gotten that dog.
Well, Claudia was judged to be vicious after our attack and, and he blew dog, so.
But the neighbors knew. But they didn't, there was no awareness such that they reported it to town hall.
No, they, they should have called the town. Yeah.
Yeah, well, if, if we raise the awareness next time, I think that, at least that particular stream could be stopped.
Well, if they had called and then the city had called, uh, Sam Panici, the, the owner of the property, the landlord, um, and told him that, you know, he's looking at a thousand dollar fine or, you know. That might have made a difference, yes.
One of the pictures we've talked about of being able to with dogs all right away, but I was thinking, we have people who are occasionally coming by and, you know, going to discuss people, even to say, you know, you and your dogs not on a leash. I think just the idea that we have people out there making an effort to watch what's going on with the dogs is gonna get around it. In Trinidad, it was kind of been continue, I mean, a little more careful.
We had, uh, letters from several, um, women. Uh, Maria Bartlett was, was one and, uh, Cindy Johnson, I'm not sure she did, but anyhow, being made afraid by dogs off leash. Not that the dogs were aggressive, but just they were big and their dogs are tiny. And, uh, about a mouthful.
Can I hear a little bit about this hearing process? So in the agenda, the recommendation is, or a possible recommendation is a, a hearing process for vicious dogs. What does that entail? Is that city staff time? Is that, is that involving the county dog catcher position? What's, what's going on there?
Yeah, yeah, it would involve the animal control officer. And through the county, through animal control.
Because what I'm hearing is that we have a lot of stuff that has already taken place and there are still these lingering issues. Um, that in all honesty is out of our control. Right? So in, in the interest of moving this discussion forward, um, I would propose that we consider adding the hearing process for vicious dogs to our ordinance. Uh, as another tool that we have access to. Um, so that we have something, because you can't do anything if you, if you can't reference an ordinance. Law enforcement has made it clear that unless it's in writing, they're not gonna do anything about it. So let's put it in writing. Let's add one more tool. And I don't mean to, to in any way belittle what happened to Ted. It's just that the discussion that we were having is out of our control, right? We cannot hunt down a dog and that kind of thing. So let's instead talk about what we can do, which is the possible addition of a hearing process for vicious dogs.
Uh, Steve, I, I, I completely agree with that. I don't think it's within the capability of the city of Trinidad to, to, to really enforce this much more than it's trying to do right now. There is a process in place. What happens is animal control, uh, requests a judicial hearing. And in our case, it was, uh, an attorney who conducted this hearing, uh, to gather facts, uh, uh, from the animal control officer and from me. Um, the guy who owned the dog did not show up, so it was pretty straightforward. And then there's a here, there, there's a finding that the dog is vicious and that's a specific thing in the state and county uh, regs, um, about what happens. And it means that the, that law enforcement is supposed to check on this dog and make sure that, or, you know, they don't have to put it down right away, uh, but they have to check on the thing to make sure that it's, it's restrained, um, appropriately in its yard and it's never off leash, et cetera. They don't do that because they got better things to do. Um, but there is a hearing process and so all you have to do is put in, in the, the city regs, um, that, that the city of Trinidad would like to then list the, the county's, uh, ordinance and process uh, when it judges that a dog is dangerous.
Great. I, I, and if we could tap into an existing process. And again, we're just simply reinforcing, like you're saying, city, state, county. All everywhere you go, you're gonna run into the same situation for a vicious dog. So if we could add that to the ordinance, um, I think then that it would, again, it would add one more useful tool that we've created through this discussion. To minimize the number of times that things, that, that things like this happen. That's my suggestion.
I agree and I would, I would raise, I would, sorry to use proper terms. I would say, so, so I think we have to add in addition to the hearing, the notice of determination, the disposition and the penalties that are also in the county ordinance. Because after the hearing, there's a notice of determination to Ted's point, they decide is the dog vicious or not? And so you've got to have that in there. Is it potentially dangerous or vicious? And then what are the penalties? Because having a hearing without the guidance, the guidance that goes with it, I don't, I don't think would have as much teeth in it, so.
And adding all of that language to whatever is in the dog license, so on and so forth, highlighting it again will reinforce it so that the more times you say something, the more likely you're gonna catch another person to.
Just, and I'm, I'm just looking at the stuff that's on the screen now about vicious dog and stuff. It just says that if a dog is vicious, well, there's no, nothing in that language that says how you, uh, find that, I mean, how you determine that the dog is vicious. So I think you need a little work in there.
This is our, our existing, uh, ordinance, is it not, Ken?
Yes, that's why.
County.
That's why I put it up there because I know we're talking about county, we're talking state and I, and I, I just want to point out, and I don't, I haven't done a legal analysis and of, of this and whether or not it's consistent with state or county regulations. But I would point out and I would argue in this particular case, city's ordinance is about straightforward and bulletproof as anything. I mean, it does, yeah. And in this case, it's the public works director, but, but even more so now the city manager, the authority to be on this information. That's the definition of vicious dog right here. Any dog that has bitten a person or an animal without provocation or which has disposition or propensity to attack or fight any person around it. I mean, it's straightforward and then it can. To talk about an animal control officer shall investigate, which in this case, anybody who investigated would have found about ten witnesses, eyewitnesses. And then bingo, six oh four oh four oh. Vicious dog found at large in the city shall be subject to summary destruction. Of course, Eli in this case does not want to necessarily make that determination and I don't blame him. But we're talking about now merging into the county process, which may be a little more complicated. Maybe it's a little more fair, maybe it's a little more democratic. But I think our ordinance, and I think it behooves us to kind of at least acknowledge the fact that this ordinance right here, without a legal analysis, see if it could ever be challenged if the public works director or somebody said dogs vicious, apprehended, destructive, you know, uh, is, is about as straightforward as it gets.
Well, do we want to change six oh four one two oh then, that where it says animal control officer is the public works director because?
Well, that would be something.
That would be something to update because then maybe your point is then if animal control is, is that presiding officer now, then they follow this procedure and, and we're potentially covered.
It's like a contract, uh, gigs because the county might say, well, if you want us to do it, you gotta follow all of our procedures, you know. So we have to discuss that internally with the county and they might say, except for that.
And then, you know, again, I appreciate trying to be in alignment, but I also do not appreciate being on hold for the next several years. The county, let's face it, the county, this is important. And the county is, is facing a multi-million dollar deficit. This is not gonna get the time that it needs and summer is gonna be here in, well, it may not come this year, but we'll see. But it's gonna be here sooner than later, so why don't we, why don't we, you know, at least review the language? We have a contract with animal control. Let's push it past them. Get their blessing or not, or at least their recommendation on what to do, but with all due respect, we're not the experts to have this conversation in this room.
Did we add to it that there's a, a large fine if, uh, you move to the owner of the property?
I think the six oh four oh three oh for me is a little weak. Um, and I, and I would just say that because, and, and so I agree, I agree with Steve that, you know, having experts look at it makes sense. I'll just say from my personal perspective, the reason I think it's a little weak is because if the dog's found to be vicious, you know, he's gonna report his findings to the owner. It goes no further than that. Right? So we're, I mean, so he reports his findings, but doesn't say anything about having a hearing or holding the person accountable. So I, I think the county's language is much firmer and more, just more prescriptive. So something to consider and then maybe, you know, come back to us with a recommendation, I guess, to Steve's point. If you want to talk to animal control and get their, their input.
One more possible suggestion. I, I'm gonna hate myself for saying this. But you could consider creating a, um, a panel of. a panel of competent dog people in town who um when there is uh an incident that needs to be something was gonna happen um and if the dog and the owner can be located uh would have authority to hold a hearing just in the city you know even before animal control messes with it because uh Steve's right it's gonna take a long time it took up like a month to month plus to to have the hearing in our case um and by then the owner was gone um you know there are a lot of really smart dog people I mean like competent trained dog people in this community uh and I really that's why I hate to say this is like to start a new another committee or something like that but if if there were if there were a body that had that was empowered to make a decision in particular cases would that streamline the process for the city it can always go on to the county after that um
a local area and then the decision would be as I have referred uh and they could also could decide to uh restrain the dog
yeah well I mean I I know Eli doesn't want to have to make this decision to put a dog down and nobody does uh but but there are a lot of people I mean I'm a I can't believe I'm saying this including us who used to volunteer for the for you know at the animal shelter who had a lot of experience with dogs um and there are a lot more people like that in this community who might be willing to serve on such a committee um we don't have power to to put a dog down um I think that has to be a recommendation to the county I think the sheriff's department you know animal control has to do that uh but if you had a local body um that said this dog is a problem would you please see to it um I don't know if that would be a good thing or not and you'd have to talk to the city attorney and see if that's a a good idea or just stupid
yeah that's good good idea we'll uh mull that one over it's um that could be a better a hearing panel um I'm gonna go to public comment um in addition um I don't know what I'm trying to say now are there any public comments about the uh dog ordinance
sorry this this public guy was commenting too much I will now shut up
no I just wanted to make sure that I didn't miss anybody else Ted thank you um okay so back to the council okay so what I heard was increase awareness we're gonna look at this ordinance we might pardon but we're gonna get some input from animal control we you know will consider who does the determination is it animal control is it public works or is it a panel of 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 your peers generally of your peers
can we continue the discussion
yeah I think so this it sounds like this is gonna be another discussion for us does that make sense guys is that what you're saying
I mean if once we hear from animal control I think we'll have a little bit more of what we can sort of what we can farm out and what we can do in-house I I think that's what we're talking trying to figure out is to be timely what can we do ourselves but what what do we need to lean on animal control for that's their role they're the experts and and so if we can delineate that a little tighter I think a a lot more people would be happy
and I just want to emphasize and we can do preventive by raising awareness
such that maybe it never comes to these crises
yes yeah and then of course in addition to animal control I will talk to what our city attorney which the Mitchell law firm represents five of the seven cities in the county so this way we'll see what other recommendations and similarities
I think you have a good idea of what we're trying to accomplish and and how tight that language needs to be to make sure we do
we might also just look around to change yet there's some of these things are already written up in the dog ordinance is the cities have used and have been successful
other cities other cities yeah that's a good idea and we can leverage um okay next topic telephone carrier of last resort obligation AT&amp;T land the last two should be fairly quick you guys so we're hanging in but uh telephone carrier of last resort obligation AT&amp;T land
send the letter
and there's a letter in your pocket
uh so yeah this this item I placed it here because uh there is going to be the California Public Utilities Commission will be considering the notice of pending regulatory application of AT&amp;T to uh be able to basically no longer be the carrier of last resort for certain areas uh initially I thought gee why are we being and then I found like about eight pages with two columns on each page of city after city after city throughout the state
that's being danced
so 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 in other words I think every area that AT&amp;T covers they just wanted to be able to get the CPUC to give them the authority to bail if if they so chose chose to do so so I thought if we sent a letter uh to the CPUC and basically indicated to them that uh you you know there are a number of issues that we are concerned about
yeah
weak cell service uh because we are in a rural area uh number two the fact that we have a number of elderly that they just have landlines and they rely in case of emergency number three even the sheriff's office uh they rely you know on certain uh uh ways to communicate and and certainly phone lines are helpful when there is an emergency uh because when the electricity goes out the cable goes out but the phone line is still there and then the other one is the fact that we have our water plant it relies on the phone lines communicate with all of our employees telling them that uh there's an issue with the water plant that address and and as a result in the middle of the night they're responding uh to the water plant so we need that landline so so basically I just want to bring it to to the council uh and then this way with your blessing we can send the letter you know indicate that it's a council action so if you take an action tonight you know directing us to send that letter
I I recommend number four be number one start with
the water plant
the the water plant notification system as you know we're a small it's not like we can just afford an upgrade um for no reason it's a landline notification system
right
for our drinking and safety I mean that's that's a public safety issue right there
sure
that ought to be enough in itself you would hope yeah well but they're gonna get a lot of those
yeah
so
correct
that's what my suggestion is water safety water plant monitoring
so in in addition to that I did indicate uh I don't have this right in front of me if I indicated the March nineteen anyway in my staff report I did indicate that March nineteen uh at two o'clock and
six o'clock
yeah so I didn't have it on this yeah I do have it March nineteenth at two PM and six PM the public the California Public Utilities Commission is going to have an online public forum so I would encourage anyone from our city to you know participate there and hopefully have the opportunity to you know weigh in on you know how important it is
okay and we yeah maybe we can post that on the website any questions or comments from the council on this all right any public comments or questions
it's a long wait
yeah all right thank you very much
the whole thing and I did end of the road that's my thing I can't my sister's turned into being cell phones I walk around and get I have to go to the cliffs but then
okay so there yeah so for the record then it's a member of the public who would like us to to push hard to keep some landline service
right
okay um Ms. Provost did you want to comment as well
um thank you and it is essential to have landlines um and I definitely would encourage the city to press hard on this um and of course the reason why they're opting out is because we're a rural area there's not a lot of population they're not gonna make money and that is that is not a good enough reason to not serve a community of need uh so thank you
all right um I think we'll okay so just to support this so do you want us to make a motion on this then that um
yeah yeah sure yeah exactly so this way we could say that the in the letter that the uh city council of Trinidad uh you know uh to quest that land would be remaining in uh service to the city of Trinidad
all right uh last thing introduction uh presentation of the twenty twenty four general election year calendar
great uh the calendar is in this is included in the packet just as a reminder for us as we branch through the next nine months before we hit the election so uh there's nothing that needs to be explained it's really just a a roadmap reminder for us in the packet uh presentation if you have any questions we can you can ask and otherwise um it's on us as staff to bring you each one of these bold liberal holes
the election's in November
yes
we have to consider the sales tax extension again
unfortunately yes uh every four years at least that's how it's been
yeah yeah I just can't believe four years is back
well what makes it a little more tricky is now that there's a there's gonna be a tax measure on the ballot this November uh also uh for this I think it's the state it's gonna be a state measure that I call it corporate tax trick or something or other I don't know if you'll get if you're you probably haven't received much um uh swag on it in mail yet and it will be pretty soon and it has to do with um I guess there's several big corporations and other financiers uh Howard Jarvis Taxpayer League I believe is involved in there trying to have a retroactive tax uh re- retroactive measure that will highly restrict how local governments can number one uh justify the reasoning for increased fees but also make that justification retroactive to any measure that was uh enacted on or after January twenty twenty two which would be our sale our occupants' debt so this is gonna be a very interesting elec- election there's a lot of economics at stake there's a lot of people who are kind of leaning towards less taxes because of the economic pressures that are affecting everyone Trinidad might be on an island on its own because maybe maybe there's a little more opportunity maybe there's a little different electorate here that can support and understand how these tax dollars are harvested not only from ourselves but also from people that visit Trinidad so um and we guaranteed but it's not as guaranteed as seen in the past
and we can't put it on a different like a June election or next year's March election has to go
well because the timing ideally it stays on the November ballot because um it's implemented April first of all from here that's how it was set up some voters approved it December rolls around there isn't another election before April first which is when we as a city would have to have that tax measure
voted in
in in place so that there's no disruption to that
yeah yeah
continue continuity so uh but we could try to uh change the limits the year how many years and we tried that the passage didn't work uh I think it was an indefinite tax that can always be repealed by majority vote of the council but it didn't apply you know I think the community liked the accountability of four years
yeah yeah I was just thinking if there's already another big tax on the November you know when we were on when I was on the school board we looked for an election that didn't have another tax on it so people are feeling it but if we don't and this is not this is not an additional tax this is business as usual
business as usual yes
yeah first of all and secondly the uh you know gave the you know from having attended the city managers conference uh they talked about it uh and uh basically this isn't a tax uh it's a group of bunch of companies a matter of fact they they're running ads uh the league of California cities Governor Newsom uh and so on uh it's it's an ad that was created and appeared in the San Francisco Chronicle and in the Apple Bay Times that basically appealed to all of these companies you're making it difficult for us to be able to govern um what it would do is almost across the board raise it up to a two-thirds requirement for like our sales stack
yeah
everything else two-thirds so the state legislature along with the league California cities passed uh a a legislation just recently to also appear on a November ballot saying that if you're gonna have legislation I mean I'm sorry if you're gonna have this proposition that's gonna increase it to two-thirds you also need to pass by two-thirds you know you can't just pass by a majority and then require everybody else to have two-thirds so 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 there's gonna be two measures dealing with this one trying to raise everything to two-thirds the other one saying you also have to pass by two-thirds
so it it may not be hard for this council to understand the benefits of this tax uh but I have proposed March and April being consideration months to have the discussion to open it up to the public it doesn't have to be both you could you could ready in March you could say no put it on the ballot you're not saying you want it you're just saying let's put it on the ballot
yeah
all we're doing that step one needs to be done by May there needs to be a resolution passed saying that hereby city council declares we want to put this measure on the ballot in November so that is that's the very first step needs to be done by May I have March and April as discussions in case there needs to be a financial discussion open discussion
and then also the the league is asking all of the cities to uh send a letter uh you know and have an action done basically saying that we as a city council uh you know feel that this uh measure of increasing this is uh that we're not in favor so we'll be bringing that to you uh you know within the next
approved
right
okay all right are there any public comments regarding the general election year calendar okay uh back to the council then I think we're uh that was information only so uh any future agenda items anybody wants to TF we're gonna you can always send us an email
we're continuing the dog discussion
yeah we'll continue dog discussion we mentioned the STR lottery uh some water stuff maybe and the tax and then whatever else
yeah and and when you say that the dog uh ordinance uh we will bring it back but it's not gonna be right away so so and and the reason I'm saying that's because we need to do some work but once we have some stuff that we can present to you so I need to talk to the animal control people I need to uh talk to our city attorney once we put something together we'll bring it to you so it it should be happening you know in in a few months but it's not gonna be like okay why was it not on this agenda since so as soon as we have something
but we could we could continue the other part in terms of dog awareness leash
yeah yeah there's some ideas for that yeah yeah
and design some kind of action
yeah yeah that that would be very useful uh because we're not only talking about the awareness we're also talking about the citations um and then as Steve and Shirley we're gonna be having a meeting community ambassador program so between that between gene uh between uh the animal control officers uh you know the ability to do citations so a combination of things
that sounds really good thank you everybody for hanging in meeting adjourned